Is this different from what we sent earlier?
Well, this is for doing this here for the town.
This is one you and Tom.
Okay, so I don't need it.
If it's a majority.
Because it'll just confuse me.
It's nine, then that would be five.
Okay. Not that I'm already confused enough.
All right, good evening, everybody. I would like to call the Town Council meeting on Wednesday, September 4th to order. The first item on the agenda is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tony Rokol.
Counselor Cludia.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Foley.
Here.
Counselor Catalina.
Uh, here.
Counselor Donovan.
Here.
Counselor Hamel.
Here.
Chairman Hayes.
Here. Good evening. The first item on the agenda is general public comments, and I think what we're going to do, this will be the place, if folks are here, to talk about the revaluation and share any comments with us, this would be the place. But before we get there, I think the Town Manager, Tom, was going to do some introductory remarks and kind of bring us up to date to where we are in the process and the things that are going on.
Sure.
Thanks, Tom.
We do have Dave Buhar, the tax assessor here tonight. But before perhaps he takes the podium, I'd like to make a couple of introductory remarks, kind of housekeeping, if you will. So, Mr. Buhar did set the tax rate Tuesday morning. He said at fourteen dollars, seven cents per thousand. We've tried to get that word out. I know there was press coverage, the press herald. We've used our own communication channels, but I'll use this one as well. Just a couple of highlights about the revaluation process. There were approximately eight hundred, excuse me, eight thousand, eight hundred parcels that were revalued over the course of the last nine months or so. Our outside firm conducted that process with the oversight of certain account staff. But I think it was important to have an outside perspective come into our community without any kind of objective other than trying to be fair and act great in their work. They did release their new values early in August. All of us received a notice at our homes regarding those new values. And then we embarked on a process whereby taxpayers who had questions, concerns, comments, were able to come in, meet with our consultants, share some of those details. And in fact, in the end, we had over almost twelve hundred and fifty different individual hearings that were held. Of that, I believe we had just over a thousand of those meetings produce some level of adjustment. Some of them were very small. Many of them probably were based on kind of factual errors in terms of how we described individual properties. And I mentioned that just to show kind of the success rate. And I was really amazed by the amount of interest and the fact that people came out. And from my perspective, this is, you know, one of the demonstrations how the process worked. In hindsight, I wish we had a little more time to study those values before they went out to all of us. I think we probably could have avoided some of those hearings, but at the end of the day, because all of you are engaged and involved, we feel really good about the values that we committed. Now, having said that, and through the process, I should mention, and perhaps Mr. Buhar can speak to this in more detail, during the last three weeks or so, he and his staff were doing kind of internal quality checks as well. And fairly early on, there were a couple of areas of town that really jumped out and deserved some further attention. The Hillcrest area in Pinecrest, and also Higgins Beach, and some other selected areas in the waterfront areas. And in fact, under Dave's direction, certain adjustments were made to those areas to bring them back to a more equitable position. So at this point, for all of us, going forward, now that the values are committed, the tax rate is set, we are going through the process of printing and sending out tax bills. Those will go out the week of September fifteenth. We had hoped, frankly, to include property cards, the updated property cards with the tax bill. We've got some challenges of timing there, and we're still exploring actually sending out individual mailers, if you will, to homeowners, and I'm hopeful to report to council in the next day or two about that process. But now that we've committed the values, the next step for us as taxpayers, if you still have questions or concerns, is to avail yourself of our tax assessor, who actually has made himself available for as long as needed, Monday, Wednesday, Friday of each week, and there'll be some evening hours. Be scheduling thirty-minute appointments with folks to sit down and go through and work through their questions and comments and concerns. So it's officially the abatement period, but we want to make that as easy and kind of remove any barriers that might exist. So please do avail yourself of the opportunity to meet with the assessor, explain your concerns, and I assure you, you know, those comments will be taken into consideration. Beyond that, we all have a hundred and eighty days to file a formal abatement if you still disagree with value, so that there's a fairly long lead time. And again, that's your right as a taxpayer to do that within that hundred and eighty day period, but we're expecting that we'll have a lot of ongoing questions in the coming weeks, and we'll do our part to be as attentive and responsive to those as possible. So with that, I'd like to welcome Dave Buhar, if that would please the council. I think it may be challenging to provide too many comments without getting into particulars, but I'm sure he'll be willing to take questions as well. So I don't know if you have any overall comments to make?
Well, at this point, the process that we're going through right now is that we're taking phone calls from people who have concerns. We understand that a lot of people have not seen the property cards. So what the first thing we're doing is asking them to come into the office. You can print them the card, they can look it over, and if they see any errors, mistakes.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but can we do a sound check to make sure that we have audio for David? Because we've been having a bad, bad record of that, so is someone, can someone in the booth confirm that? Or maybe? Okay, so, and people at home can hear it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
So, we're asking them to come into the office. We can print them the card, they can look it over, and we can help them make corrections. And then if they have any further issues, they can make an appointment to come in and sit with me, review the property card and the values, and, you know, we can take it from there. And as Tom said, if you're not happy with the results, you can file a proper abatement request. I'm trying to avoid having many people do that directly. I'd rather they come in and we have an informal talk and see if we can resolve any issues informally before taking the next step, which is to go before the board. So, that's where we're at. The phones have been busy, and we're trying to accommodate people. We're scheduling them to come in, and so, you know, it's just going to go till it's over. So if there's any questions from the council or the board?
Let's start with any questions from the counselors.
Dave, I wanted this, I just want to thank you for the extra efforts of you and your staff to, you know, to work diligently to try to make adjustments and to offer extra time that was not conceived originally. But can you, can you share with us why, it did seem that there were a lot of errors, can you share with us why we did not have a step, a fact-checking step before the, you know, the original assessments and appraisals were made? In many other towns, it was very clear, there was a, after the appraisals, appraisers went through the homes, they sent that out to homes and had them validated, and that was a step that was very thorough, very comprehensive, and something that was done before the calculations were made. And that afforded people an opportunity to get the errors out of the system before we got into the situation that we're in now, which is chasing, chasing errors and doing it after the fact.
I think it's a matter of procedure, depending on the company that's doing the revaluation. In this case, KRT, they made an effort to get into the buildings, and if they were able to, then they had the property owners review the information and sign off. If no one was there, then they had to do, they did a measurement of the building, and they estimated based on the exterior inspection. And then, and then they sent the, you know, in the end, they sent out the information to the property owners. I think it comes down to the quality of the staff. With these companies, there's a lot of turnover, so they hired a lot of people, they'd have to train them. If they don't have much training, you know, you lose a little bit of quality.
I'd also say that it's a function of timing. The same company conducted our commercial industrial reval with those values coming out about a year ago. We engaged them to do the residential component, which they started late September, maybe first of October. And we knew that it would be a challenge to work through the community, to do it as thoroughly as could be possible. And we actually had bi-week, or monthly milestones, and kept on top of them to make sure. And even with that, we found ourselves really compressed on the back end, so.
And KRT also sends people out to do reviews, to view the work of the initial inspectors. So that was, in a way, that was a quality control step. But again, you know, they did the best they could under the circumstances, and also with the hearings, they were able to correct a lot of mistakes.
Great, thanks, Dan. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson.
So I believe that the total valuation on the residential side of town has been reduced approximately forty-eight million dollars since the KRT evaluation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do you know how much of that is from your office and how much of that was from KRT's meetings?
I don't have a specific number I can give you.
That's, that's all right.
We reduced a lot of value at Higgins Beach and also at Hillcrest.
Were there any other neighborhoods that had that global adjustment, or are those the only two specific ones?
There were some, there were some at Pine Point, Phil's pretty sure is that I changed. Not the majority, but there were some there, and here and there. But mostly, the biggest chunk was Hillcrest and Higgins Beach. And KRT reduced a lot of values through their hearings as well. So, it may be half and half, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I haven't doubted that.
I've asked for that report, so I'm interested in that data. I'll certainly share it with council, with the public in terms of where that breakdown, where the adjustments happened.
Can you give us a little more detail on, I think both of those communities, Hillcrest and Higgins, accounted for most of that forty-eight million. Can you talk just generally about what caused that to be so overvalued that resulted in the adjustments? And then two, in Higgins Beach, the Portland Press said it was a cross-the-board ten percent decrease. Was it across the board, or was it specific areas, zones?
At Higgins Beach, I think they were fairly aggressive in setting the land values. Also, they used a certain methodology to account for ocean views, which I don't agree with. So I went through, looked at all properties. Basically, if a property had a tall building with an ocean view, they gave more value to the land, even though the lot next door may be exactly the same and had a lower value because it didn't have a ocean view. So I made those corrections, and then the, looking at the new values compared to the sale prices, we realized that they had pushed the values up, so the ratio was over a hundred percent, was at about a hundred and ten. So, so we had to dial that back.
Was that a software issue, or, I mean, why, why would they just over, you know, over-appraise Higgins Beach and not?
They, you know, they assigned values to the lots that they thought were appropriate, and when you added it all up, the ratio came out over a hundred percent.
But it didn't happen at Pine Point? It didn't happen at other sort of beach-facing?
Right, right. It's, it's part of the process when you do a revaluation. You go through a neighborhood, and you reset the values, then you look at it, and to see where it falls in regards to the sales. So it's, it's not unusual. And Hillcrest, Hillcrest is a unique situation where the sale prices reflect the units, but there's also an intrinsic value added to that. As one person described it, it's the privilege to be there. And there are communities like that. So, KRT was aiming to get the assessments up to what people were paying, and they put all the value in the buildings. So we had to dial that back.
But the view issue didn't happen in any other sort of assessment across the town?
The view issue?
Well, assigning additional value for views, it sounded, you know, it sounded like that was a major component in Higgins Beach and why you made the downward adjustment.
Right, right.
But there's lots of other properties.
Yeah, well, there were some at Pine Point and Phil's pretty sure is, and those have to dial back.
Counselor Catalina?
Yeah, I want to thank staff. It's, this is a slog, I know, with the assessing, and I know that people I've talked to have met with their staff have been pretty satisfied. Maybe they're not totally happy, but they're satisfied, so, you know, thank you for doing that. I also know from my own experience in real estate that in the state of Maine, setting values on properties is extremely hard, because we don't have, like California, where you have every house looks exactly the same in a development. It's more like comparing apples and oranges and limes and trying to make adjustments thereof. So I'm happy to hear that the assessors are willing to continue working on that, and I encourage people to make the phone calls if you're still not sure of what was done correctly. We're here, that's why we're here, so make sure you call the assessors. I do have two questions that have come up to me from constituents. One is, why was Proust Neck not valued or some reductions in value there? And then the second one is, how many of the cards, excuse me, the valuations that had to be adjusted, or you decided to adjust, people either weren't home or did not let the assessor in? And then after the fact, they were like, well, wait a minute, you made a mistake. So if you could, the first one is Proust Neck, why was that?
When this started, we did some, we did some studies in different areas to determine what the ratios were. This goes back to when we started with the commercial reval. Commercial properties' ratio was below seventy percent. The residential, on average, was about eighty-five percent. Proust Neck was at about a hundred and twenty-two percent. So there was a clear indication that the prices there were coming down, and the assessments that had been set for many years were simply too high. And that's mostly, that was mostly with the waterfront properties. On the interior, Proust Neck, it was a mixed bag. Some of those assessments went up and some went down, because there was a lot of irregularity with the interior properties. I guess in the past, it was more focused on the waterfront to make sure that those were accurate. But clearly, the sales have shown us that things have changed there. Values, people are not paying what they used to. Values are going down.
And if you don't mind, I, just, are values going down? Let me back up a little. When you did your analysis, were you looking at just Proust Neck sales, or do you make that wider? Because that's such a specialty market.
Well, I did, I did a number of sales.
Yeah.
Waterfront sales in general, and Pine Point sales.
Okay.
Higgins Beach sales.
Okay. And then that not home, do you have any idea, or is that something we could look at? You know, the people who came in that were concerned, they, an assessor was not able to get into the house? Because people don't always call and get permits and whatever for things, and we don't know changes have been made, so.
Are you concerned that we didn't get the correct information?
No, no, I'm not concerned about that. I'm just, I don't have a concern about that, because I know there's a certain number of people that were like, I'm not letting an assessor in, I don't care, you know, which is fine, that was their right to do so. And then people weren't home when someone came, and even when they went for the second sweep. So I was just curious if you knew how many of these people asking for corrections had not had an assessor into the interior of their house?
Well, the inspectors put notes on the cards.
Yeah.
Whether or not they did an interior inspection, or.
Right.
They were not able to get there, or they refused entry.
Yeah.
There are notes on the cards.
I was just wondering if there's a correlation at all, or, I don't know if it's significant or not.
Well, if someone questions their value and they refuse entry, then the solution is for them to let us in.
Right, right.
Yeah, I asked the question, that information isn't readily available, just because it wasn't recorded.
Right.
For that purpose, but that's not to say we can't assemble that information. It would require us to look back through the cards of the twelve hundred or so that had hearings and determine whether or not there was an interior inspection.
Even now, if someone calls and says, I want to, I want to have a meeting with you because I like my value, it's too high, and if I see, you know, they really dispute the value, and I question them, and I suspect that it could be something else there, then I will request an inspection.
For me, it's as much, I just had a couple people ask it, as much as curiosity questions, so I don't want you to do a hunch or whatever on it.
A lot of people seem to be concerned with their neighbors, and.
Yeah.
They want to make sure their neighbors are paying their fair share, too.
Right.
And that's understandable.
If I could just offer some historical perspective, Dave has been with us for almost two years now. I've had the occasion to work with three different assessors. When I came, Paul Lusbrance was here, he had twenty-eight-year experience with the town. And then we went through a couple of other ones in the interim before Dave came, both extremely qualified assessors. I can tell you that Proust Neck has been an interesting and a bit of a vexing challenge to all prior assessors because of the lack of sales, at least sales that we had confidence that were arm's length. that were arm's length and bona fide transaction that hit the market and were tested in the market. Interestingly, in the last two years or so, there's been a flurry of sales that give some level of confidence that they are arm's length. And so what that confirmed, and I think he reported that the ratio was over a hundred and twenty percent, is that over time, there was a bit of a superinflation in values there because we didn't have a way to validate it in the market. But we now have data that suggests that there needs to be a correction. And I bring that up just for the historical piece, but also, it's probably the best example of what this is all about. It's using data to help us understand the best way to have equity and the tax burden share. Some go up and some go down.
Yeah, and to get back to your point regarding properties that they weren't able to get into, we also have the old cards that have information. It's generally good, reliable information. Of course, we always run into situations where people have made improvements, without permits and those don't get picked up.
Yeah, I run into that frequently when I'm listing houses, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I don't think this is for Mr. Buhfart as much as it is for the town manager, but you said when KRT puts together the data that they're going to share with us, my question was kind of in line with Counselor Catarina in that, one, I'd be curious to know of the exact number of hearings we had, what percentage of those actually got adjustments? So if twelve-hundred people came through our door, did one thousand one hundred and fifty of them actually get adjustments?
A thousand three, so.
A thousand three out of twelve-hundred?
Eighty percent or so.
Okay.
Which shouldn't be shocking, folks coming in are coming in because they think there's a problem and we recognize that.
Right, it just bears a concern for me of all the folks out there who still have concerns that haven't figured out how to access or use the process to come in and do that and it's incumbent upon us, I think, to make sure that they know how to do that still.
Sure.
And then I was curious about Jean Marie's question as well. Will KRT have, because they know exactly who got, you know, where they had access and where they did not, will they be able to share with us afterwards of the ones that we had to make adjustments? Was the non-access a big issue in terms of, that's really what you were getting at, right, Jean Marie?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, again, each card has the note whether they had interior inspection or not. I don't believe, that's the answer I received anyway, that they tracked it right along. So we'd have to assemble it and it's certainly possible to do.
But we could do that, okay.
Yeah, KRT is contractually obligated to provide us manuals and some details of their whole methodology. I must admit, I've seen the one for the commercial process, it's not likely to be all that helpful and instructive to us. So I'm interested in assembling other information I think might be more relevant and easier for us to understand, of more use. There may be some conversation later about having a workshop and we would welcome the opportunity to be able to, in a more informal setting, if you will, with the certainly public present, to delve into some of the details and the sales analysis and those sorts of things.
Counselor Johnson? Have you worked, I'm assuming you've worked with a third party in this context before? Can you speak to this experience versus previous experience?
What do you mean?
In your career, I'm sure you've had, you've dealt with a third party that's had to revalue the entire town before and then you're enacting assessor after the fact?
No, I've helped someone do a revalue before.
Okay.
Town of Gorm, years ago.
Okay. But as far as this relationship between a third party and then it kind of gets kicked back to you, that's not?
It's, it's a...
I know it's very normal, I just didn't know if you could speak to an experience that you've had without, that's not this one, but if you can, that's completely fine.
Well, I can as an assessor.
Yeah.
You know, I've not been a chief assessor somewhere else.
Right, right, right.
I have helped to conduct a revaluation for the Town of Gorm many years ago.
And do you have any thoughts as far as the way that this has played out versus the Town of Gorm a few years ago or?
I think this is pretty standard.
Okay.
And this company does have a lot of experience. They've done a lot of work in Maine. And I did, I did call a number of towns in Maine who had used them before and they pretty much gave me positive feedback as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So now that you've been, spent two years revaluing pretty much every property in town, I have two questions, but the first is, looking back, is there anything you'd do differently? Are there any lessons learned that you'd take away should we have to do this again? And then the other question that somebody asked me today was, when we sell, when properties change ownership, do we look at them to update their values or are there any triggers that might cause us to revalue a property outside of a revaluation?
No, when a property sells, we don't, we don't go in and chase the values. That would be what we call chasing sales. And it would make it unfair for that property to increase that value and not everyone else's value, especially if the market's going up. First question.
Is there anything you'd do differently or any takeaways that you have?
I would have preferred to have more time to review everything before commitment, but we just didn't have that luxury. And I certainly don't like the idea of waiting fourteen years to go with the actual estate mandates. It should be done within ten years. And there is, there is a process that could be done that the state encourages and that's to review every property in town once every four years. So you can split the town into four sections and review all four sections over a period of four years and then update those values. And you can also do statistical updates, which would not require inspections. So there's a number of things you can do to try to keep up with the market.
Sorry, one more follow-up. There's, it's been suggested that we might be able to stick with the old values for the October tax payment and then go with the new values in April. Can you speak to that and if there's any complications that might arise from that approach?
I don't know how you could do that. For one thing, the plan was to do the commercial revaluation last year, implement those values and then do the residential evaluation this year and implement the residential values this year. If you waited another year, in other words, last year, the commercial properties took the hit, so to speak. The residential properties saw their taxes pretty much stay even. If we did that again this year, it really would be unfair to the commercial properties to force them to bear more of the burden. So this way, we're equalizing everything. This year, the residential values are seeing, the residential properties are seeing their values go up and the commercial properties, their values are staying the same. So from the tax rate decline, they're seeing their taxes go down. Last year, they went up, this year, they're going down. So it's, I think it's a fairly, fairly good way to do it and now everything's going to be fair enough. But the way to go this year, I think, is ask the control.
Thank you.
Could I just answer maybe specifically a question from Counselor? The question was related to can we build the first half on the old value and the second half on the new value? I asked that very question to Justin Poirier, he's the Director of Property Tax Division of Maine Revenue Service, actually Dave's former employer. And there's a, there's certainly a legal challenge there because essentially, we can commit once every year and it's value as of April first. And so I think there's a legal challenge and there's a huge practical challenge and I think it would certainly cause difficulty internally, but also confusion in the public. So the only option, I guess, somewhat close to that would be to simply delay the implementation for full year. And I think Mr. Buhfart spoke to the potential negative ramifications of that. But the fact is, we've committed values and at this point, there's no retracting that as far as I know.
Counselor Johnson?
David, I understand that taxpayers have been contacting you and asking for consideration of their own circumstances. For how long a period of time will you be open to be able to answer people's questions and consider their pleas for adjustments?
As wise as it takes. We're scheduling three days a week for meetings, one evening a week and hopefully it won't go beyond December.
If it does, he won't care. He's, I shouldn't say that. He's retiring in December.
Thank you, David.
Counselor Ham. I'd just like to make a comment on that, the last exchange. Actually, it's a hundred and eighty-five days after commitment date that people have, if I'm correct. So that will go beyond the date that we have your services.
They could apply for abatement, it's up to a hundred and eighty-five days.
So if you're gone, then, you know, someone else, hopefully in the office, will be doing that. So the question I had is, a lot of this is about setting expectations. And a couple of key data points that were communicated were, number one, that, you know, our tax rate of sixteen point four-nine will go down. It'll go down somewhere in the range of something to twelve to fourteen, a new rate of twelve to fourteen percent. Well, we blew the high end of that range, fourteen point seven. So that's one expectation that went out the window. The other expectation was, you know, assurances formally and informally that, well, as a town, our residents should expect that roughly a third of you will have a decrease, a third of you will have no change, and a third of you will experience an increase. How well did we do on that metric? And if we don't know, when will we know?
I can't give you statistics in that regards, but I think under normal circumstances, that's probably what happens. But with a fourteen-year gap or period between the last reval and this reval, the values have gone up significantly in fourteen years. So that sort of eliminates that idea that some will go down and some will stay the same. Some probably did go down.
So just one quick follow-up and I'll, you know, thank you for the time and all your effort, but I've been learning by sitting in on some other meetings recently that the sort of, there's a, you know, a rule of law, taxation is the rule, but exemption or in this, in their case, abatement is the exception. So the worry I have is that we, you know, up until now, you know, we, it seems as if we placed the burden on residents to find and address issues and to obtain adjustments. If we look back at the big adjustments that contributed to the forty-eight million that was a major driver in that fourteen point seven percent tax rate, it, these were category errors. And I think it's safe to say, I think the residents at Hillcrest and Pinecrest, we got flooded with emails, we got more emails on that than anything until we made the adjustment the day of the last council meeting. So those came from residents. And then, as I understand it, you know, Piper, we did some analysis. So going forward, are we going to be doing more analysis to identify other issues or are we going to rely entirely on, you know, residents? And I'm particularly worried about those that may not be in a community that has a well-organized association that can represent them and plead their case and go meet with you and have extra meetings and really do a great job of advocating. Or they have, you know, folks like us, we've identified a category area. What about those folks that we heard about last week who came up and said, something happened, I don't have my property card, I don't know what to do? How do we help them? And we still haven't released detailed property cards.
Well, we're still available to anyone who has concerns and we can provide them with a property card and help them examine their property cards and answer any question that they may have. When it comes to your assessment, it's really up to the individual property owner to make sure that they're properly assessed. We can't do that. That does the process here now. We can't scrutinize every single property to make sure that they're fairly assessed. On an annual basis, maybe the assessor can review as much as he can, he or she can, and make adjustments where they need to be made. Because different areas of town, different neighborhoods do move in different directions at different speeds in terms of value. So there's always adjustments you can make. It's always sort of a moving target.
If I could just respond to the expectation comment, Counselor. I think it's a fair criticism, frankly, of the conversation early on about the expectation of what we should expect, the one-third, one-third, one-third. That is a commonly used adage and I think it actually is appropriate in many cases. We should have anticipated that that wasn't going to be the case here and I think that's a fair criticism, frankly. With respect to the estimated tax rate, I can assure you, the assessor would loathe, was loath to even talk about such matters, but given the circumstances, we felt as though it would be helpful to help gauge what those, what that expectation was. Clearly, we didn't anticipate there'd be as many adjustments and that was the difference in not making that. In the end, it was just under eleven percent. I don't think we should be criticized for that, we're trying to do the right thing, left to our own devices. We wouldn't have predicted it at all. But it certainly wasn't David's work, it was mine and others.
Thanks, Tom, I appreciate your response. Thank you for that. But I did want to ask, how will we account for future adjustments? We're going to have additional meetings, it's very likely we're going to have other adjustments that will amount to some figure. How will that be handled? Our commitment date is done, so where does that get booked and how does it get paid?
Sure, we have an annual overlay account whose express, which express purpose is to fund any abatements that are granted after commitment. This tax rate assumes and includes something in the order of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars in overlay. We've done, I think, a more thorough analysis this year than we ever have in terms of what we expect and we think that will be sufficient to cover any abatements that are granted from this point forward.
Counselor Ham.
I think one of the valid concerns people have had is that the tax sheets that they have for their own individual properties have references on them that are not readily discernible. And so, and I understand that some communities have put out informational pieces that have explained what those all mean for taxpayers. I suggest that as something that would be beneficial for us to do. I also want to make sure people realize, you're not losing, after a hundred and eighty-five days, six months, yes, for this tax year, you have extinguished your right to appeal the taxes. Or just go in and talk to David, call him up on the phone or email him and say, here's my concerns. And deal with it on the phone or by email. But as soon as the new tax bills come out, a year from now, you have all the right in the world. You may think you've lost the opportunity. You haven't. It renews every single time you get a new tax bill. You have the right to appeal it. So you may think that, ah, I'm a little nervous about this, I'm sitting on my rights. Don't feel bad. And I know there's a number of Realtors and lawyers like myself who, really, if you're concerned that you have a little anxiety about dealing with this, call us because we'd be happy to help you.
Counselor Johnson?
To kind of piggyback on what Counselor Ham was saying, is there a mechanism where, let's say you have two people that come into your office for Mitchell Hill Road and you've decided, hey, these two, you know, these two people did need a second look? Is there a mechanism where you would then look at the area or is it truly on each individual person in a given neighborhood? I'm trying to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Ham was... I'm trying to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Hamon was saying.
Well, I sort of do that with every property. Someone comes in and says, I think my guy used to, I'm also the one that their neighborhood is.
Okay.
Kind of compare. That helps to tell me, you know, whose guy was right and whose was wrong.
At this point in the timeline, is there a time that you would take the initiative to do that? If there, like I said, if there was one neighborhood that you saw two or three times, would you actually take the initiative to look at the, when I, is that appropriate for you to take that initiative? Not you, like, is it appropriate to do that? Could you do that? Could you say, okay, these 20 houses?
Yeah. Not this week.
No, no. But that's, that opportunity is not lost, so to speak. So if there is pockets in this town, and...
Yeah. That would be a red flag, telling me there could be something wrong with this neighborhood.
Yeah.
Neighborhood code needs to be adjusted or downed.
Yeah.
Could be a simple fix.
Okay. And my second question and final question is to the town manager. Is 250,000, that's a pretty aggressive overlay, or is that, do you feel comfortable with that as far as?
That's a fairly typical amount.
Okay. Are we in a typical situation? That's, that would be my concern.
Fair question. We scrutinize that, David and myself. One of the final decisions.
There are a few other issues where we might need that.
Right.
The payment application that already works.
Right. And that's our 250. That's what we budgeted for this fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we're looking at a pretty skinny overlay compared to what we have in the pipeline and on a couple of different angles?
I don't know if I'd agree with the characterization of skinny, but we think it's adequate to cover the expected abatement costs.
Okay.
So just a follow-up question on that. If we do the math on what's been spent so far, I'm not a math guy, but this is a basic question. We've spent 48 million on, how many adjustments have been made so far? Roughly 1,000, you said? So if we've done 1,000, and that cost us 48 million, we got 250K left. If you use that, you know, average adjustment, that ain't going to take us too far, I don't think.
Well, just to appreciate, the 48 million is in value as opposed to the 260 is in actual taxes that would be abated. So you're talking about two different things.
Okay.
The taxes on a million dollars is 14,000.
A million. That were abated so far, so not, okay, I understand. So thanks for correcting me.
I'm expecting most of the issues that we run into from now on will be minor issues for the most part. Things like, the flooring wasn't correct, you know, just simple things, for the most part.
But if you stay with my argument, and thanks for the correction, and now you know I'm not a math guy, but if you stay with that argument, that would mean if we have, you know, at a, what is it, $100,000 per, it'd be, we're going to be overreaching our overlay by twofold if we have half as many people coming forward to, you know, get adjustments. No? I mean, what's the average, what's the average on a million over 1,000 people?
Yeah, I guess we're looking at 20 million.
What's the assessed value change equate to 250,000?
I think the point is if we fall short on the overlay, that's going to run into next year's budget.
Yeah.
You know, they've committed the tax rate already, so, you know, any abatements that come through, more or less than expected will have a carryover effect on next year's budget.
And actually, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we, in prior years, we've actually booked a little additional overlay for some of the contingent liabilities we know that's out there? So technically, we do have some additional overlay reserves, if you will, that we have generated in the past, because we do have some outstanding things pending. So there is that sort of safety valve, if you will.
The way that works, any overlay that's unspent, and at least during my entire tenure in this town, in fact, my whole time in this profession, I've never had to, abatements haven't outpaced the available overlay. And so in that case, that extra money becomes fund balance. Conversely, if we find ourselves in a situation of needing to pay out more than the overlay is, that money comes from fund balance. So abatements will be, that are granted, will be satisfied.
So I guess with that, this was supposed to be public comment. I think we've exhausted ourselves. At this point, I'd welcome, thank you very much for your candid answers, and thank you for all your efforts in trying to serve everybody.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, David. With that, I'll open it up to public comment, but anybody who's interested to come up and speak at the podium, as it relates to anything that's not on the agenda, which is, which is the tax reval.
I'm Susan Hamon, and I live in Two Bay Street. And I wish that I could feel confident, more confident, that the revaluation that we've just completed was accurate. But with so many errors admitted by the town, how can we feel confident that our assessments represent the fair market value of our property? Two areas in town which got adjustments have strong neighborhood associations that can speak as one voice for the neighborhood. The rest of us are on our own and for ourselves. How do we know that there are not similar issues affecting property values in our neighborhoods? Please release more information so that residents can see the statistical evaluation, the validation. Provide an explanation of how to get from the values on the property card to the bottom-line numbers on your assessment. Provide residents with rating and pricing schedules used, including the land pricing formulas and the definitions of the scenic views. What are the indexes? What were the assessing neighborhoods used, and how were the boundaries established? How many assessing neighborhoods does Scarborough have? I've looked at York and a number of other towns, and the town of York has something like 55 assessing neighborhoods. Provide statistical summaries showing the median sales ratios by neighborhood, by building type, by construction quality, the size of the house, the price of the house. These are all standard statistical validation studies that should be done as part of the whole process. Put the numbers online, and I'm talking about the median sales ratio and the coefficient of dispersion. Not everyone is going to look at this information, but there are plenty of number printers out there, and that will appreciate them. Please, just put the information online, show us the data. Send out the property cards. This year, I'll be paying $12,390.63 for me and most people in this town. This is our largest single bill. For God's sake, send me my property card. And one final thing, I would really like to see the town post the originally proposed assessments from Higgins Beach along with the revised assessments. We taxpayers would really like to see all changes that were made. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward this evening?
Is this issue that are also on the agenda beyond the tax obligation?
This is for public comment, for anything that's not on the agenda this evening. So to the extent if you want to speak to something that's on the agenda, there'll be public comment when we get to that agenda item. Does that, does that help? Any comments, anybody?
Paul O'Brien, on your, you mentioned earlier that you wanted to hear some of the feedback, issues that people were having. I kind of blame KRT for not sending out the property cards with the letters that went out as other appraisal companies do, like Tyler Technologies is going to do for Portland and beyond. When I got my summary online, not the property card, but just the summary that KRT put out, I noticed three errors. So I made my appointment, went to KRT, pointed them out. She said, oh, yeah, that'll make a difference. Yeah, that'll make a difference. One thing, when I viewed the property card last night, there was one thing she didn't write down, another thing that she wrote down wrong, and another thing that, anyway, it's still wrong, there's still errors in it. And I'm thankful that he's going to extend the period of time, because I have no faith in KRT at this point, twice. And I did let them into my house, because I didn't have anything to hide. I had permits for everything, you know, and I just, I don't get it. I think KRT should have sent out the property cards to begin with. I think out of 1,200, there's 1,000 that have something wrong. That's a large percentage of ones that have things wrong. I don't know. Didn't write it down, so off the top of my head, that's what I have. I'm thankful again that he's going to meet with people, and hopefully, the third time around, someone can get it right. You know, I don't mind getting my share, but, you know, I corrected all permit issues years ago or whatever. Anyway, so that's my experience.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, I'll close, general public comment. The next item on the agenda is item number five, which is the approval of the minutes from August 28th. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Any discussion, any edits, any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor? There are no adjustments to the agenda. I've signed the treasurer's warrants. The first item on the agenda, order number 19058, 7:00 PM public hearing in second reading on the order authorizing issuance of up to $1,500,000 in bonds of the town to fund the cost of replacing the existing artificial turf field and renovating the existing track surface and place your order question on the number fifth ballot. With that, Tom, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, if I could. Late this afternoon and here at your desk this evening, you should see a memo from Todd Souza, Director of Community Services. As you may recall, at the meeting just a week ago, and this actual order was postured starting at the request to the authorization of up to $1,600,000, the council adjusted that down in first reading to $1,500,000 to reflect the amount that was shown in the budget. Just quickly, by way of background, we undertook an RFP process. We did not have detailed engineering done of the facility. The RFP process, I think, worked fairly well in this regard, in that we're relying on the skills and the expertise of vendors to propose a solution to a kind of stated objective that we put out there, and we can learn a lot from them at their cost, not at ours. Because of that process, there's a lot unknown. And in particular with this project, there was drainage and subsurface aspects that no one is quite certain of. And so understandably, many initial responses provided some level of flexibility just for the unknown. Since then, and over the course of the last week, Todd Souza, and I know Michael Gage from the high school, have met with a number of the vendors and actually continued to have detailed discussions with two of them that they have kind of vetted and prefer. And we're now comfortable saying that to do this project, in our opinion, the correct way, that's the proper repair of the track and proper resurfacing of the turf field, 1.2 million would be sufficient to do that. Beyond that, I'll just note that there is an existing reserve account that was established when the field was first built. The intent and the hope was, over time, that would build to the point that there'd be sufficient funds to actually do the turf replacement. Through a number of circumstances, that's not the case. The current balance is about $116,000. I would suggest that we perhaps could consider that as a contingency account that would be authorized by council, should we find anything unforeseen. So that recommendation would stand regardless of the amount that you approved, but our recommendation to you would be to ask the voters for 1.2 million to do this project the best way we know possible at this point.
So with that, do any of the council members have questions for Tom or team on that issue?
Tom, I had a question.
Counselor Hamon.
So, I mean, I saw the narrative, I saw the letter from Todd, but there's no real additional analysis to support it other than, you know, there's no spreadsheet or anything, no detail supporting this?
No, it's, these are ongoing conversations, but we come before you with a lot more comfort in that number than we did just a week ago. And in our best professional recommendation, we believe this is the budget required to do the project correctly for most cost-effectiveness and longevity.
So I guess with that, now I'll open it up to public comment. Would anybody like to come up and talk to this item?
Alan Bornall, 211, Creek Drive, Scarborough. So I'm glad to see the investment of the town. This is a lot of money. People who know me know I'm a fiscal conservative, but I believe in if you're going to do it, do it right. So I have some concerns about where the money was cut out of the 1.6 to get it down to this 1.2 number. I'm a little concerned, I saw some bidders were more on the turf side, and I want to know what concessions were made on the track side. We have a really good track history here in Scarborough, and frankly, we're a athletic program, it's a great front community. So I wanted to get a sense of, is the track just being resurfaced or taking it down to grade? What's the thickness of the track being resurfaced? A lot of things are really important to the longevity if we're going to make this big investment for the future, let's do it right. So I'd like to find out those answers if at all possible. I believe that these bonds are all going to be separate, so there's no co-mingle with the funds that have fair assessments involved. So that's all I have. I'll look for some answers if I'm expected to now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to?
I just want to follow up here, looking at the numbers again. So the number was reduced, was being reduced from the ask from 1.6 to 1.2 million. We approved 1.050, right, million. So, and then there was a reference at the bottom to other funds available to take care of contingency. So those to be included in the 1.2 million, or would be available to draw on over 1.2?
I would say over 1.2. And typical rule of thumb, 10 to 12 percent is a reasonable contingency in any project. These are funds that are controlled, they exist, they're controlled by the town council. So rather than asking 1.3 of the voters, we're saying, we're coming to you hat in hand saying, we think we need 1.2 to do this correctly. And should there be some unforeseen things that we don't know, there are other resources that we come back to you and seek authorization to use.
Thanks.
Through the chair. So I just, I guess a point of clarification for me. So this is to put on the ballot, a question for the voters to approve the project, right? So where I'm confused is, if we think it's going to cost 1.3 with contingency, isn't that the number that we should put on the ballot? And then, when we go to actually issue the bonds, if we think that number is, you know, really 1.2, then we might say, well, we'll actually just issue 1.1 million in bonds, and we'll fund the other 116,000 with this account.
That certainly would be one way to look at it, yes. Just because we have voter authorization to a certain amount doesn't mean you need to bond that amount. And in the coming weeks, we will have more detailed and even a better sense of what that cost is. But we believe 1.2 will be sufficient if for some unforeseen reason, there are these other resources that could be tapped into.
Okay. So with that, or just a second on the counselor comments. I think we're still in the public comment, so we're trying to get, is there anybody else that would like to speak to this in public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close, public comment. So there's a motion on the floor, is there a motion to approve? The motion has it appears at least on the agenda at this point.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, open it up, all those in favor? No, open it up for discussion? Counselor Hamon?
I'd like to make a motion to amend, to set the figure referenced in the order in the two places it is referenced at 1,500,000, to set it at 1.2 million.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion? Discussion, discussion, anybody?
Yep.
Counselor Ham.
This may not apply in the realm of politics, but say what we mean, mean what we say. We approved 1.050 million, and I see the analysis and I've heard the arguments, but I, I think that, you know, I'm not going to vote in, in favor of the revised motion. I think we were on the right track the last time we reviewed this, and there's nothing in the additional data that I find compelling to change my mind. So, and I think that this is hopefully a lesson that, you know, coming, coming into the budgeting process, I know there, you know, there are unknowns and there are things that we can't always plan for, but I'm not comfortable adjusting this as the revised motion is recommending.
Thank you. Counselor Henry?
I definitely support adjusting this. As you may or may not know in the audience, I thought it was crazy to reduce it from the 1.6, like the speaker, Mr. Cornwall, said. You know, if we're going to do this, we want to do it right. This is a huge investment in our athletic facilities. And like anything with construction, you get into things and all of a sudden it's like, whoops, we didn't see this, or oh, we need to fix that. And I would remind the public that just because we authorize 1.6, you should put the word in there "up to," it doesn't mean we're going to spend it. So we decided not on the 1.6, which was a disappointment to me, but I would certainly support the 1.2. But that's because I, I don't want us to be penny wise and pound foolish.
Any other counselor comments?
I was wondering if we could hear from Mr. Souza, because what, one of the things that, you know, this memo says, which, by the way, did come out, I'm not sure when, but I, I was actually in email today, and one of the things that makes me a little bit crazy on the council, and I've said this about many other issues, is trying to, you know, vet things in real time. And when we, and it says, I feel very confident with this number. And, and to Counselor Ham's point, what makes us feel more comfortable now at 1.2 versus 1.6? Do we actually have some, some spreadsheet numbers that you were sent? And why weren't we also sent those? Because I made the comment last week, you know, that had this come in, you know, around this number before, I probably would have, it was much closer to, to what we had put in the budget, and so I was, I would have been more comfortable. But a $600,000 swing was a big swing for me. So now we're kind of like, are we just, it feels in some ways like we're just throwing darts. So I want to see what the meat is behind those darts.
Absolutely. And I appreciate the question, and I can understand why that. And I apologize last week if I wasn't clear. The reason why we brought the initial 1.6 was, we put this out as a proposal. We did not spend the initial 30,000 or 40,000 dollars of engineering to scope down a project. We asked for a proposal that we, as the athletic department, vetted through with, we had a meeting in, in, in the spring with high school coaches and booster to find out what we wanted in this project. And we asked for the professional comments from the vendors to bring us back a proposal. And so that range was at that 1.6. And then we found out that we had to give, of timing of this, that we had to bring a number quicker to bond. And so that's why we were on last week. And so since that point from last week, the plan had always been to, we had received a proposal from five vendors, knocked it down to three that qualified in our scope of work that we put out in the RFP. And then Mike and I had met individually with those vendors, trying to vet down the project, what it meant. And so then we could clarify what was important to us, what was not important. And so that initial 1.6 included their vision of what this should be. And so since that point, I narrowed it down to two vendors and got firmer, detailed quotes back from them. But I'm still in final negotiations with them because we took away things out of the proposal where, to answer some of the questions, we had a priority on safety, moving fence, dealing with the base, or repairing the base that engaged it. The best track surface that we could afford to put in for value, and then also turf. And so a lot of the costs that are in there are around the track more than the turf in the sense of what is going on with this. So getting down to these two final vendors, there's still room to negotiate. I received numbers from both of them that are around that 1.2 mark, that I still think I can negotiate down to get what we need as the best value. We cut away things where inlays in the turf with, with logos they had imposed, color, color inlays in the end zone, things like that. We've gone from, they proposed initially, replacing field goals, we're going to reuse that sort of stuff. Things in the ground that made sense to move a sleeve or move a discus bit, excuse me, we tried to keep those because it makes sense why dig up the earth twice if we're going to do those things. But the, the add-ons, if you will, or trying to renovate new field goals, or long jump pits, you know, as far as different values of those, those are the things that we're negotiating down. And once I pick a vendor, then that vendor will be able to go back to their vendors and say, this is, this is where they want to be, and there's still space. You know, we've tried to negotiate increased warranties, all those type of things. So I do have those two numbers, but to be honest with you, I'm still working through the process to try to get both vendors to come down further to get the best value in the best scope of work. So it's a different process rather than us pre-engineering, putting it out there and getting the price because that's the engineer's version of what it needs to be. And so kind of work to try to get us the best value. And so I'm still scoping for the project.
So it's still possible, you could hit the original number?
Absolutely, absolutely. There are choices though, because between the two vendors, one has given us an option to deal with the base, but until they open it up, they may not know what's down there. They may be able to get to the base, do some crack repair. They may come back when they open it up and say, the town should really spend that additional fund. But all of those get us under the 1.2. And so that's where that kind of contingency comes into play. When we see those decisions, because there is 30 years of surfaces under there of overlays that are just stacked up, and so when we open that thing up, those are decisions that we have to make along the way. But I've got quotes to do repair the base under that 1.2.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any questions for Counsel Johnson, sorry?
No, go ahead.
Silly question. Did our action last week help you negotiate a better price with the vendors?
No, because that was always the plan.
Okay.
The problem, the challenge for us is that we had the bond question to get to you before on the 28 versus the 4. The goal had always been to get to this point. So when bond council had asked to do that first reading in the staff, that pushed the process there. I didn't want to come with a number without sitting through. It's about all the way through the weekend on the whole of vendors trying to negotiate this down to where we are.
If we approved up to 1.6, do you think you would have put, accepted a few of those fancy add-ons that you are not going to now?
I think there's always that, I can't say that we would look at them, because it doesn't mean that we don't need them.
Yeah.
As far, I, I can't say for the logos, but as far as replacing-
Because you don't need the logos.
Nope. But again, you don't inlay the paint, and so there's cost leading to why. And so again, when something's stitched and glued, it's there. I can rent it every day versus trying to send a crew out to paint it when the company or university wants to borrow the field. That reduces our rental potential, so.
Gotcha, okay. Yep, thank you.
I just want to make a clearer point on the two weeks and why we're finding ourselves in this compressed time frame. Because this was approved of the budget, and this is what we've done historically, that budget process, as you know, includes a first and second reading, public hearing, so there's a process associated with that approval. In the past, for those, we've done a once and done before council. Our bond council has said, just to be cautious, kind of the belt and suspenders approach, let's put it through the, again, the rigors of a first, first reading, public hearing, second reading. And that was two weeks that, that, that we did not plan on. That was kind of a late word from bond council. So it came to you two weeks sooner than we anticipated it would, and we're now trying to make up time.
Thank you. I, I support this motion to, to move it to 1.2 million as well. And I, I think it might help to explain the process a little bit. There's three opportunities for the council to opine on this in the process. The first was during the creation of the capital budget, and that's when the 1,500,000 number came up. And it was identified as an important project for the town to take on at that point. But to your point, we didn't spend $100,000 to dig up a portion of the track to understand exactly what's up there. So even now, there's some uncertainty, as you say, that, you know, the 1.2 might not be enough, but we think it's enough. What we're doing right now is saying, well, let's ask the voters if this is a priority for them. The council already said it was. So I, I fully support moving this forward. But then there's another checkpoint as well. If the voters do approve this project, when we go to bond it, which is when we actually take on the debt for it, there'll be another opportunity to, for Todd to say, well, no, it's going to cost 1.3, or it might cost 900,000. And then we can decide if we want to use some of those funds to help pay for that. And so, yeah, I do support putting this in front of the voters.
Counsel Ham?
I had a couple other follow-up questions. So you've talked about some measures that you took after the, the, the meeting last week to negotiate with the available bids. Did you ever consider just pushing the reset button on the whole RFP process and asking for different bids?
To be honest with you, no, because the process was always the word backwards from here. Based on our timeline, with the, the damage that was incurred, the vandalism, and just that this will be coming on 14 years, we are down to thread on the turf hazard lays. And so if we miss this window to vet it in this, this election, and get it in front of these vendors a choice, to plan for a spring, we're going to be under the crunch to get a June timeframe, to get an opening from August 1st is the goal, as we put in front of the vendors. And Mike has already been working with his team to know that, once we see what that scope is and they start opening stuff, it might be a lot of work for our athletic department to wiggle that thing left or right, spring or fall season to make sure we have a window, excuse me, to complete this project in a, in a, in a manner where we can then go through checkouts and, and training on everything on the way out the door, if so proved by the votes. And so, long answer, no.
So have we reduced the scope of work at all? I know you mentioned goalposts and logos and stuff like that, but in terms of essentials?
Yeah, I know, great question. So initially, right now, getting down to the final two and working this way, a lot of this has fallen on the vendors. Both are very, they were down very motivated to get this, and so a lot of this is coming from their end. We've reduced, we have drainage on the end in the D zones. One of the vendors had asked for additional slot drains around and they reshape it. But there's ways to, to bring those drains back in, and so they've made some reductions in that. Our field really does drain well as it is, so that's, that's not a concern, as much as it would be if we had a problem with standing water. Again, they had closed red track, you go back to black, it's $20,000. So all those color changes, inlays, we talked about logos and color offsets, all those, you know, full color in zones. Stitch or glue, that's $10,000. So we've really kind of narrowed that back down to get, really what you see is what you're going to get back, new, safe with, you know, with a little change. Again, reusing certain things, things that we have removed, and again, part of this negotiations, how do we get some of this new back? Track program was requested, getting power to the inside of the hole. Right now, they run an extension board over the top of the tracks on posts for trackings. Those are things that we're still trying to renegotiate back into, but those are things that we had to cut out to stay at status quo. Doesn't mean we can't rework with the vendors to get this back into the hole. But that's what Mike and I have to sit down with them and try to get it. Same thing with like long jump pits. Standard now, they've changed length, you know, do we get covers and trays to keep the area, or do we reshape and get ion covers? So those type of things to reduce maintenance. The big thing here was about fixing the footprint. We do have a fence that's technically too close under the new standards, how do we get that back and provide safety? So those things were all in there. But a lot of it came from the vendors not being competitive against each other. I mean, I told them, there's two of you, how do we get this done?
And then finally, how, how was the, thanks, Tom, for that, how was the turf replacement fund funded?
So they're based on rentals that we get to use off hours. When initially with this amount, what I understand is that we were one of the first, the luckiest to have terrains, and so there was a greater use. But as our high school program teams have developed to three levels, freshman, first and second team, that number of hours has reduced, which is just where it is. And so we have less opportunity to rent, and that's why that fund never grew, what Tom was looking to earlier. It's never grew like it would exponentially, and, and a lot of that has seen through the success of our athletic department, both at a numbers level, but also as a competition level, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any additional questions for, for Tom this morning? Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
I guess where I am. I won't be supporting moving this to 1.2. Part of this conversation really capsulated that for me. I mean, we started last week with 1.6, hearing that that's what we needed to have. In a week's time, that's gone to 1.2. You just heard that there's still lots of room in negotiation. I think Counselor Johnson asked the question, if we stayed at 1.6, would we have spent that? And the answer kind of was, yeah, maybe. I think it's important when we do do budgets, and the budget is approved, and it goes to the voters, and we look at it, it's important to have things dialed in and having the numbers. It sounds like if we stay at the one point where we were, the budgeted number, there is that, that account that sits there that can get us close to that 1.2. I, I don't think we need to go to 1.2. I'm afraid if we say 1.2, we're, that's what we'll end up spending. So I'm, I'm not going to support it. I think we can do this for, for the number that was budgeted. I think budgets are important, and we got to develop some financial management, accountability. We just can't keep throwing money at things. So I think there's an accountability to deliver what's in the budget. Thank you. Anybody else have comments? All those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? So it's back to the main motion as amended, that it is amended to read authorize an issuance up to 1.2. And with that, is there any further discussion of that item? Counselor Fuller?
I would just add, I mean, I just want to, for the record, want to be clear. I have no desire to take away from safety, but I, I agree with Counselor Hayes. And I, and I also think that when you're playing with numbers like this, you've got to show the reasoning and the rationale behind it. To just say, I'm confident, you know, we were confident that our mill rate was going to be between 12 and 14%, and we're not there. So things change, and, and we need to, I think, in order to regain some public trust that I believe we have lost, I think it's important. That said, I know this project is needed, and I am going to support, you know, the motion going forward. But I do think it's something we have to be more careful of going forward.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? I guess so. All those in favor? All those opposed? Five, two. Next item on the agenda is order number 19059, public hearing and second reading on the order authorizing issuance up to 660,000 in bonds of the town to fund the cost of the new upper truck surface and to place the following question on the November 5th ballot. So with that, Tom, I think it's really no change or additional conversations?
No, as I mentioned last week, just to put it in perspective, this is to replace engine two. By the end of its life, it will have served us well for 31 years. And this will be assigned to the Dunston station. This is part of the equipment replacement schedule that's well-traveled, well-worn, if you will. And this matter was approved through the CFP process in the budget.
Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Motion to approve, order number 19059.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Next order is order number 19060, public hearing and second reading on the order authorizing issuance of up to 2.5 million in bonds of the town to fund purchase of land and interest and land throughout the town and for purposes of conservation of natural areas, providing public access and recreation and protection of wildlife habitat and scenic or environmentally sensitive areas. And it places the question on the November 5th ballot. Again, this is a second reading. Is there anything new to share, Tom? I think it's pretty straightforward.
No, there was one item, just to put your attention to, Chairman and myself received today, we provided a copy of that, I believe it was a letter of support from C.D. Armstrong, from, a long time involved with the friends of Scarborough Marsh.
And with that, is there anybody from the public here to speak to?
Hi, I'm Rich Farley, Executive Director of Scarborough Land Trust, and we really appreciate the council's careful consideration of this important issue. This issue came before you right now because, as you know, for the first time since the year 2000, the town is without any available funds to support our conservation of land. We're, we are grateful, as a side note, to the council for your recent approval of the last bid of the funds for our better Blue Point Preserve purchase, which is going to happen in the very near future. And I just wanted to take a second to reiterate something. I know that you noticed, but this is not the last time that you will see it. If you approve it tonight, it will go to the voters. And then, for every dollar that's spent from this fund, the town council and the Parks and Conservation Land Board will have a chance to weigh in and decide whether that's an appropriate expenditure. I think that most people would agree that Pleasantville Preserve- I think that most people would agree that Pleasant Hill Preserve was a wonderful addition to the town, and it brings more to the community than the 65 houses that were planned to be there. And analysis at that time also showed that the town saved a net of $2.2 Million by investing in that and conserving that, rather than having it developed. So, it's a fiscally responsible move, actually, to conserve land. And the point I want to make is that there are other properties like that out there. We don't know when the next one is going to pop up. There's a lot of pressure from developers and rising land values, and we think, you know, at any moment, another Pleasant Hill Preserve could become available, and it would be just a real shame for the town not to have the ability to move. So, I'm here with, there are six SLT board members here tonight with us, so any of us would be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? No, seeing none, thank you. So, I guess with that, the Order Number 19060 is on the table, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Second. Any discussion, comments for last night? Counselor Fuller?
Well, I would just, you know, echo what Mr. Bard just said. We talk a lot about fiscal responsibility, and, you know, land conservation is one of the best economic engines, tools that we have in terms of what we do for the future of the town. So, I'm 100% in support.
Yeah, I'm going to support it as well, and I said this at our last meeting, my only hesitation was that this isn't something that was on the capital budget. And after doing quite a bit of research, I understand now why, is because we're not actually intending to bond any of these funds, it's an umbrella program. So, it is different than some of the other things that came before the Council. What I would like to see, though, going forward, particularly for, you know, issues like the Blue Point Preserve, is let's try to incorporate those to the extent we know into our budgeting process so that we can be a little more thoughtful about which bonds we're going to issue each year.
Thank you. Counselor Kettering?
I am fully in support of this for all of the aforementioned reasons. I see this as a way to basically, I don't know, set up an equity line, if you wish, for the future use of the town in preserving land. As Mr. Bard pointed out, they don't always know, you never know when an opportunity is going to arise. And that doesn't mean we have a blank check here either as a town council, it's going to have to come back for every single time they want to spend something out of this. So, it's not like we're going to sell $2.5 Million worth of bonds tomorrow and paying the interest on it. Over all this time, it's really setting up an equity line, is perhaps a good way to explain it to folks. So, I absolutely support putting this out to the voters, and I will definitely be asking voters to support this when it goes out to vote. Thank you.
Counselor Hall?
People support this for all sorts of reasons. The one that I think people who are fiscally conscious should realize that it is one of the best growth management tools that we have. It saves the town money in the long run, and while that's not necessarily first on my list, I think the fact that I go by Pleasant Hill Preserve every day, and I see the beauty of that open land is number one for me, but there are a lot of good reasons to support this, and I do.
Counselor Hamel?
It's hard to argue with the value and the cause and what this does for us in terms of preserving our character as a community. All great things, and a terrific organization, very committed, very responsible. Scarborough voters approved the expenditure of $5 Million over the past 18 years, and it's taken them that time to spend that, to set aside land for our future and that of our children. So, no dispute with that. The issue is, there's no immediate need, and that was admitted by the folks that spoke last week. And so, you know, the question becomes, so why do we have to do it now, and why, and that, I'm out, you know? Since 2000, we approved $5 Million, and we're going to be approving half of that in, you know, potentially in November. The other thing I'd point out is, when we talk about funding things like this, we really don't talk about things like first-year debt expense, and if you kind of add up what we're talking about tonight, that will likely be approved. You know, it's about $340,000 of debt expense that we'll be experiencing next year. 81K for the turf, 63 for the pumper truck purchase, 194 for land trust. So, you know, we tend not to think in terms of debt expense, and I think we need to start focusing on things like that, and the fact that it's really not going to be 2 and 1/2 Million, it's going to be a much larger number.
Counselor Kettering?
Through the chair, Counselor Hamel, a good friend. The, I don't know if you're misinterpreting something, this $2.5 Million first-year expense would not be incurred necessarily, because no one's asking to spend any of it. All they're asking for is authorization for the purchase of bonds at some point in the future for future purchases. And as I said in my comments, I see this like an equity line that will be fully vetted every year, and if at some point in the future, it doesn't look like it's the right thing for the town to do, to release bond funds for a purchase, then that town council at that time will have the opportunity to make that decision. But I think that, to say that, I don't know what your number was there, but to say that that's what the first-year cost will be, and make it sound like it'll be this year's or next year's cost, that's not true.
Well, if I may respond to my friend and colleague, Jean McRee, who people refer to as the Odd Couple, so, you know, we're always willing to talk, so let's just put it that way. The problem I have with that is that, let's look at the numbers. Let's look at what we've appropriated in the past, and how much was not spent of what we approved. Let's do, let's take a look at the numbers, just for the heck of it, and then let's talk. So, you may be right in terms of the year-one impact, but in terms of what we do with the money longer term, and the trade-off costs for things like that versus schools, versus doing something for our seniors who are going to be packing up and moving away because of their new tax assessments, is this really and truly a priority, and are we really being honest with ourselves about, it just means we're going to appropriate the money, we'll never really spend it all. I don't buy that. And I am going on no data, but let's have a look.
Counselor Fuller?
So, I'd be willing to bet that we will spend the money, maybe over a 20-year time period, but if we looked at the analysis and did the ROI on land that has been conserved, the money we have saved our town and the beauty and character, for me, hands down, again, the best economic development engine we have and tool that we have in our tool locks. And I just feel so strongly about it that I had to say that.
And for me, I guess, question to town manager. Tom, I don't know the answer to this. When we actually put something on a referendum and we authorize the issuance of a bond, does that have any, and I understand we're talking about the timing difference between when it's the authority to issue a bond at some point in time versus when we actually do, but does the fact that we've issued, or we've gotten authorization to issue bonds, does that impact in any way our debt rating and, you know, as Moody's looks at us and others, do they look at it as an outstanding liability or obligation?
I think it is considered. It's not reflected in our annual debt service, so we've not incurred it, but I think it is considered in that overall analysis, because authorization is granted.
And so it's a liability?
Just like a credit card. The credit agencies will look at your total allowable balance and assume that you're going to spend it all. So, I think it is considered in that analysis, yes.
And so for me, I think I'm in the same place. I echo everything everybody has said. I tremendously support the land trust and what we've done. I've worked on the properties, I really appreciate it. I voted no on the first read, I'm going to vote no tonight, not because it's a worthy cause, but because I think we're at a real risk of, there are going to be three major capital items on this November's ballot. I'm really worried something's going to get voted off. And if it's the track, you know, so I think in prioritizing what's needed in the community, clearly there's a need to resurface the track. I mean, there's been, there's been a lot of, there's lots of concerns about injuries, the fire trucks, we need to make sure they're safe. I had always favored putting this on the November, I mean, not the June ballot. There's nothing pressing right now, there's no need for the issue, there's no properties available. I'm concerned that we're going to bump something off the November referendum, and I don't know what it is, but I think with the mood of taxpayers today, especially with the tax rate being something different than what people anticipated, I'm not sure it's going to be a very receptive audience when it comes to November. So, I'm looking at it from a strategic point of view, not that it's the right thing to do. So, that's just where I stand on this issue. Counselor Kettering?
Yes, and this is just a question through the chair to Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall, am I correct in remembering that bonds were passed, or the opportunity to bond for the sewer to go under the main turnpike, and that hasn't been spent, correct?
Correct. That authorization exists.
That's just one minute. I just had to keep that in mind.
I could be wrong.
Any further discussion on this item?
It is a good example.
I guess. Counselor Fuller?
I just have to say, Counselor Hayes, I appreciate your strategic approach. At the end of the day, I don't know that us seven get to prioritize for the town, and that's why I would say let the voters prioritize, because sometimes I think I know what the voters want, and I'm dead wrong. So, you know, at the end of the day, they're the ones that are going to say yes to the track, yes to the fire truck, and yes to land conservation or not. So, I get what you're saying, and I know there was concern to build some support, boots on the ground for this as well, but for that reason, I refute your analysis.
So, with that, are we ready to vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? I think it's five two. Next item is Order Number 19064, 7pm Public Hearing and Action on the Request for a Special Amusement Permit for, how do you pronounce it?
Tavern.
Gavert?
Tavern.
Main Racing LLC located at 1 Scarborough Downs Road. Tody, anything we should know?
We did send out the letters to the butters within 200 feet, there were 74 that were sent out, and we received no comments back, be it a letter or email. And everything is in order, I recommend this to people.
Great.
Yes.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this? Seeing none? Motion to approve?
I have a question. Quick question. Do you know what they're doing? I'm just curious.
There is an event that's, is the gathering of some sort.
They do it every year, is this something? They do every year, I think?
They haven't had this in the last couple of years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, with that, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Sweet, I have it.
What?
I was tired.
He had a kid.
I thought we talked after we seconded it. I actually had an email from a constituent about this specific thing, so, this is not contract coming to Scarborough Downs, correct?
That's true.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
That's all I wanted to ask.
Okay, so you're good?
I'm good now.
All right.
Order number, yes.
Order Number 19065, An Act on the Request to Approve the Name of Ernest Minor, A Second Alternate to the Sustainability Committee with a Term to Expire December 2020 That Was Posted at the August 28, 2019 Town Council Meeting and Recommended by the Appointments and Negotiations Committee. Don, anything you want to share with us, or?
I want to thank Tody for reminding me to get this on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody in the audience that has any comment, would like to make any comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Paul?
No.
Sorry, seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing none. And the last item, Order Number 19066, Act on the Request to Establish an Ad-Hoc Committee, Community Center Advisory Committee and Approve the Charge for Said Committee. And Tom, I think you're going to lead us through a convoluted process?
I will do my best. Well, hopefully it's not convoluted. As the council certainly were, but the public may not, the council held a two-hour workshop a week ago on this, generally on this topic, but in specific, they spent an hour, you spent an hour talking about process going forward. A clear part of that conversation involved the creation of an ad hoc committee to assist the council to study the possibility of the community center and a public-partner partnership. I had put together a draft that maybe served as a bit of a reference point for the conversation. I listened as intently as I could to Counselor input, and have produced a version for you this evening that's in front of you, that I believe reflects at least the consensus opinions that I heard. I may have missed some of those points, and in fact, I know Counselor Hayes provided a number of potential changes to the document. And so what you have before you this evening, and I should mention Counselor Hamel as well, let me speak to the first step first. In my opinion, I looked through the Counselor Hayes' suggested changes, there were a number of them that, in my opinion, seemed to be fairly benign, and for which I expected there would be fair amount is not unanimous support. So, the first motion that's prepared reflects a number of small changes. You can see them for yourself. Beyond that, there were a number of other changes, five in total, and I suggested that they be brought up individually as motions, assuming that there may be at least some discussion around these, and I would encourage you to consider them one by one and vote as you move down through. Late in the day, we did receive some further changes from Counselor Hamel. I beg your pardon, I just didn't have time to work with them, and so that's going to be something we'll have to struggle through to bring forward any of those concepts.
Yeah, my apologies for feedback that anyone is going to have to suffer through, but what I tried to do, and I don't think really happened completely, is I tried to piggyback on changes that Counselor Johnson had made. You know, I thought Counselor Hayes, Chairman Hayes were fine. So, what I suggest, if we're going to try to do a motion on every red one, which is Paul Johnson's, and every blue one or purple one that's mine, can we just go clause by clause? Because some of these I might pull off as we go. So, I was going to offer that as a process suggestion.
Yeah, thank you for that, and I think that could be helpful. I would suggest that you move through perhaps Counselor Chairman Hayes' first, because I think there's some crossover, and that will hopefully help focus any remaining issues, and I'll do my best to help guide you through that.
Great. So, maybe before we start, just be with that sort of even convoluted introduction. Is there anybody in the audience that has any comments about the ad hoc community center or the document that was at least distributed with the packet of materials? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And so I guess the first order of business is to introduce the motion that we had, 19066, so we'll start there, I guess. Motion to approve that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
That's not a good start.
Yeah, that's a rough start. And then I guess I'll introduce an amendment to that, which is titled on your desk, Motion 1, which Tom has provided, and the changes in there are in red. So, I don't know what would be most helpful, certainly not reading it all. I don't know if you want me to go down through and kind of talk about the reasons, or if people just want to open up their questions.
Did you offer the amendment?
Yes.
Need a second, though.
I'll second it.
And so it's open for discussion. Counselor Johnson?
Speaking strictly on Motion 1 here, which is our standalone one drafter, I don't, nothing strikes me as too significant of a change in my mind. I do appreciate the lease slash build edit, I think that's important. And I also, I thought the previous quorum of four was too few. We have a committee of nine, I think a quorum of few. quorum of four was too small, so to speak. With six, I am a little concerned, because it is nine, there is gonna be some attendance issues. So, I could be talked into five, but I would vote for six. So, I, I'm kinda going back and forth, but that's my only, that's all I have, so.
Counselor Henry?
Yeah, I will agree with my friend on the other end of the table, Counselor Johnson. I, I put it in here just that I would rather change it to five, just to make it an odd number for voting purposes to, for the quorum. So, that was the only change I saw in this.
Counselor Donovan?
If the person making the motion to amend wants to withdraw it and make a motion to amend with five, then I would support this.
So, it's not very formal.
That was your, yeah.
Yeah, I'll pull it back.
I'll second your new motion to amend.
So, it's this one as is with five.
Less.
With five.
Anything else? Counselor Foley?
I, I would say I would agree with Counselor Johnson, and I can support this one as is. I, I'm concerned about what we have coming up as being much more substantive changes, and it's a little bit of a hot mess, but we'll try to muddle through. But I'll support this first motion.
So, with that, with closing out the discussion, all those in favor of Motion One as amended? Okay. Then, then returning to the main motion, introduce a motion, a second amendment, motion, so-called Motion Two, which is shown under the segment that was schematic design and layout. And if we could talk about it in detail, and it, what, just trying to change some language to include some type of survey of the community to determine what they do want in the amenities and the schematic design. Second answer question, but anybody motion, motion to approve?
So moved, or second?
Second.
Second and yours.
And then, open for discussion. Counselor Johnson?
I, I agree with the spirit of it, except statistically valid is going to be a difficult thing for seven counselors to come. In a perfect world, I agree. I wish we, I wish we could charge them with statistically valid, but getting that, coming to the consensus of what is statistically valid, separate of bringing out, you know, a former actuary or something, I don't know. I, it, that's just, that's gonna be a difficult goal to achieve. So, I agree with the spirit of it, except the wording of it, I'm just a little, I'm a little nervous that that's gonna make us chase our tail just a little bit, I guess.
Any suggestion change?
No, I don't have a suggestion. No, but I love other people's suggestions.
How about striking strategically, just have a ballot?
Well, yeah, statisti, yeah. Well, I said, I don't know.
Counselor?
Yeah, I, we could conduct a statistically valid survey of the community to come up with a list of what should go into a community center, but I don't think that's the option that we're presented with right now. It's not, you know, everything under the sun. What, I think what we're looking at is more narrowly focused, and we've got a partner who's already looking to build some of the components that they feel the community wants, and they're looking to see if we can partner with some things that we need. So, I, I just think that it, it's not focused enough to, for the committee to be successful at the end. I, but to your point, I, I, I think, you know, some survey or some discussion about community priorities or what should go in there is worth while.
Counselor Henry?
I would not support a statistically valid survey for the reasons stated by my fellow counselors, in particular, you know, how do you define statistically valid? And statistically valid surveys are very expensive, to be honest with you, or can be. That being said, I would also say that when you, when you go down this road, I see this ad hoc, it's ad hoc, which in Latin means for this purpose, as being very narrowly focused on, we have an opportunity in town, and is it a yea or a nay for us as a community to pursue something with this particular development? And I'd like to see this committee laser focused on that. And then, if we need to expand their vision or, or whatever we want them to do, then we can do that at a later point. But I, I think that conducting a survey is not needed at this point. I think what we're gonna have are nine members of the public and four people who are involved with the town from the school board and town council, and I, and they are representing the public in this, so.
Counselor Johnson?
I don't support this amendment. The, if you read the schematic design and layout section, you'll see that the committee has the authority to go through a full process of review to determine whether or not this is the right combination of services. And that's really what a survey would do. But they, if they determine that they need to take some steps to identify to a greater degree than their collective knowledge about what is appropriate here, they have, they have the authority within the, the charge as it's presently written.
I guess where I was in reading that, what it seemed focused on is them just looking at what, what has been designed by the staff to date, and we really don't have any validation other than anecdotal stories of, just a great example is a pool versus not a pool. I mean, we don't have any statistic, we have no data from the community other than, you know, anecdotal stories and sort of when we're doing, you know, the comprehensive plan, that the intent was, and nine people don't necessarily speak for the whole community. So, it was really trying to attempt, there should be monkey surveys, something simple, just to ask people what are the critical amenities they need. That's all I was trying to get at. We don't, we don't know that. And I don't know if it can be recrafted in a way that meets everybody's needs.
The last sentence says, "Public input on the proposed schematic design shall be solicited."
So, it, they have broad authority to survey, I use that word loosely, what the community's interest is.
Counselor Hamel?
I just had a question. So, when I was listening to the presentation by the Edge, you know, we were talking about surveys, we quizzed them on their survey, and it was a Facebook survey. So, questions about it.
On their own page.
So, so I kinda, I understand, I think, what you were getting at here by, by calling that out, and I don't see how that is, you know, in conflict with the, the last sentence that Counselor Donovan had just referenced.
Any, Counselor Henry?
Yeah, I also wanted to inquire, I don't agree with striking the sentence, "Review the proposed schematic design prepared by staff to determine appropriateness of amenities to be included in the premises to be leased by the town." I think they should be doing that, so I would not strike that. Does you also have that in this motion?
Yes, that's correct.
Right, I mean, I was trying to rewrite that.
Okay.
But that was the intent, though.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't strike that. I'd leave that in.
Guess we're right. Difficult. Counselor Johnson?
I, I, I do like, although you're just trying to restate the, the sentence before that we struck, I, I mean, I do like specifically stating modify the staff proposal. I, I do, I know that some of this can be argued that it's all saying the same thing, but I, I think there's some validity to the fact that we, Mr. Souza presented a great little skeleton, right? But I think it's important that, that it's stated pretty clearly that we don't have to stay right in that. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's close, right? Or, or maybe it's not, I don't know, right? But I, I do like, I do like saying specifically that, hey, this is, this is, this is Todd Souza's first crack at this. You know, we don't, we can think outside this box, right? Maybe it's bigger, maybe it's smaller, what happens. So, I just, I do like you using the word modify simply to suggest that we're not in Todd's first crack, so to speak. That, so that was one of the strengths, I thought, of the edit, but that's where I am with that.
I don't see where, through the, I'm sorry, through the chair. Could you point out where you're talking? I don't know where you're talking, maybe I'm missing something.
Oh, right at the end of the new, it says, "Design review and modify the staff proposed schematic"
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. Thank you.
As appropriate, that's all. It's him trying to, I think, restate the sentence before, that's all, but.
Just to make it clear. Counselor Donovan?
I, I agree. I like, I mean, I like the fact that it's clear that the committee has the discretion to modify the proposal that's presented to them. So, I wouldn't have any objection to including that language at the end of the sentence, which is shown as struck.
So, your proposal is to keep the, trying to do this on the fly, keep the first sentence and then, and then put in there that, and modify the staff proposed
Schematic as appropriate.
As appropriate?
Yes. And so, if this motion that's to amend, that's on the table right now, on the floor right now, is defeated, I would support a motion to add that language to the first sentence.
So, I could withdraw this?
Yes.
And then, the motion would be to add that to the sentence?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
And stop me if I'm going way out of scope here, but to, to maybe get to what you were saying, if we take the last sentence of the paragraph and say the count, the committee's first priority shall be to solicit public input, that might help strengthen the language about public input for you. So, if we took that last sentence and made that the first sentence and just say the first priority shall be, and that, and then, that kinda gets to what I think what your concern is.
Yep.
It's not changing language a whole lot, and, and then, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna have to decide, their, their committee's gonna have to decide what, you know, if they did enough. But if we say it shall be their first priority, then they sit around the table and say, okay. So, that might be a way to bring us together on that one.
So, can I draw the motion as read and suggest as an alternative motion, I can do that, right?
Yes.
To follow Paul's lead, put the public input as the first sentence. The public input on the proposed schematic should be the first sentence under the design and layout piece. That's what Paul just discussed. Take the struck, the sentence we struck, and just modify it at the end. I don't know what I have to modify, it's right there, right?
And I guess, do we wanna say that the first priority shall be public input, just to give a little more strength to it?
Yeah.
First priority shall be public input.
So, Tom, can you maybe take a stab at reading?
Sure.
Even with the motion?
As I understand the motion, it would read as follows. Bear with me. Schematic design and layout, the first priority of the committee shall be public input on the proposed schematic design.
Oh.
There's a bit of kinda scripters.
Shall be to solicit public input on the schematic design.
With particular emphasis on gauging community support for indoor swimming pool. Review the proposed schematic design prepared by staff to determine the appropriateness of amenities to be included in the premises to be leased by the town, and to modify the staff proposed schematic, schematic as appropriate. And then, the remainder remains unchanged.
I'll make that motion to amend.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. So, back to the main motion as amended, and then, make it a motion to introduce motion number three on the sheet, which really talks about just adding the second, an additional sentence on the projected revenue forecast to have it confirmed by an industry expert. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second? Open to discussion? Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, I, I recall that we talked about this in the workshop, and there was general agreement that we'd done something similar to that with SEDCO numbers on the Downs proposal. So, I think that was, at least I recall, was connection to, to this revision.
Yeah, and just to speak to that, my characterization of that, that thought was found in, could be found in consulting support, and I quote, "If in the opinion of the committee that outside consulting support is required to accomplish the task, the committee is encouraged to advise the council immediately with specific detail of the type of support required and an approximate cost of these services. The town council will consider all reasonable requests for assistance."
So, I recall that more as a project management assistance, separate and distinct from this one.
Fair enough. I was just speaking to, I, I do recall the conversation, I was trying to capture that notion in that language.
Great.
Perhaps I failed.
It could be, as you pointed out, it could be the same expert. That could do both, possibly.
Yeah, sorry. I just, I guess I'm not clear on what you would consider an industry expert. Like, I know for aquatics facilities, there's companies that we could bring in that, that would be able to help with that aspect for, for a community center. Well, off the top of my head anyways, I don't know who you'd bring in that would be considered an expert. You could bring in a financial expert to look at the numbers, and maybe an expert or consultant to help guide what components or services you want there. But it just, I guess I'm not clear, so I'm not sure that the committee would be clear on, on how to fulfill that charge.
I mean, what I was trying to get to is the projected revenue forecast is gonna be absolutely critical to the numbers. I mean, you know, we're saying we think it's gonna be self-sustaining, so that's, that's a pretty big number.
I'm not saying that.
And again, we don't have experience in that, so the thought was the industry expert would be someone that runs these types of centers that have some type of ability to look at the revenue projections and say, yeah, or no. That was the idea. It may not be clear, but that, that was concept. Counselor?
I know it's a bad habit, but perhaps Mr. Souza could give us an idea of what, what we might add for language, or I, he might know if there's.
I think that, I think the point is well taken. It all gonna come down to scope. Until you develop the scope, then you need, you need to bring in, sorry. It all's gonna come down to scope of the project, because then the expert may be in that area, because depending on, you look at the membership model, is that the greatest choice of revenue to offset things? So, I'd bring that person in to calculate what the threshold is, but sales is still sales, so there are projections. And then, more of those other spaces, and that's what the Edge has kinda gone through with their model for the hockey rink and the turf, is build time slots. And then, they've decided, we're not ready for two sheets, we want one sheet. And so, those impacts, economic, the development, so I think you'd have to look at, I think it's kind of a loaded question.
Yep, okay.
Counselor Johnson?
I, I liked paragraph six because it, once the committee gets into its work, if in its opinion, outside consulting support is required, we can, we can approve it. And so, that, that struck me as giving them sufficient discretion to pick and choose professional consulting assistants as needed, as opposed to mandating. And using the word I, experts was problematic for me. I thought this phrasing I liked better, and I thought it sort of responded to what the town council felt was an appropriate provision to have in.
Any other comments? So, with that, I guess, no further discussion? Vote whether this is, this motion stays in or goes out? All those?
Can we sit one more? Because I, I guess I'm stuck a little bit, because I would vote for this as it is, but I don't like it, so I'm just trying to buy some time, so.
Do you have a wordsmithing?
Yeah. I mean, confirmed by, we could say, confirmed by a third party as appointed by the, a majority vote of the committee.
Or you can.
Yeah, no. In consultation with, you know, experts as required, or, or as they deem necessary. I, I guess you can loosen the language. It, it seems directive, but not clear what you're directing to there. I think it's covered with paragraph six.
The other thing I would just observe, paragraph, paragraph six gives them broad authority regarding any of the analysis intended or not. What's proposed before you is limited to the, the revenue forecast, and there may be value in outside consulting help across others. Just as a thought.
I guess my only concern would be that if we look back at our experience with the Downs, I didn't, if, if this gets, when this gets to the stage that the council's making a decision, I think that one of the things the council immediate, that really helped make our decision was third party, was verification. So, I can really appreciate what Peter's trying to do here, because if the committee decides not to, and then we move it to the next stage. and then we move it to the next stage, are we going to then get hung up on a majority of the council or three of the, whatever it happens to be, is concerned that there's no third party verification? So I, I think this has some really good foresight to it. I think that it's worth maybe discussing this a little bit longer. If we are interested in making a decision relatively quickly, things that help make the decision quickly is to, we could put something in now that to foresee, you know, how do we get that validation? If we leave it up to the committee, maybe the committee feels so good about the work that they've decided it doesn't and then a fresh set of eyes gets on it and then all of a sudden. So I, I would just encourage everybody who wants to work on an accelerated timeline. I actually think this is a big, looking ahead three or four months. This actually, I think this is a big part of it, so I just want to get it right.
And I guess that was my thinking, that the language in paragraph six says they may, that doesn't mean they do. And I think before, for me to do due diligence for fiduciary responsibility, just like we did on Scarborough Downs, I'd want to have the analysis vetted by, you know, a third party.
So get to Counselor Johnson's point, that's what I was trying to set up, is that by the time it arrives at our table, that there's some verification. Counselor Foley?
So would it work if we just struck an industry expert and put by a third party, verification is determined by the committee? And then you're also double-covered in paragraph six. Would people, would that make you, would that achieve all the?
Confirmed by a third party. How'd you word that, third party?
I don't know.
So confirmed by a third party.
I tried to wordsmith it. Oh, I can read it.
I'm sure John's is better than mine.
I would have bet on that, but it's longer, so generally I don't like length. But, but, so the, the second sentence would read, "This analysis should consider a reasonable rate structure that is consistent with similar, similar facilities in the region in consultation with subject matter experts' experience with the services and amenities agreed to by this committee."
I like that. So I withdraw my motion and substitute as amended by Counselor Clumkin. And Tom, did you capture most of that?
I got the, no, I, I think you.
So I struck, I struck the and confirmed by an industry expert and substituted "in consultation with subject matter experts' experience with the services and amenities that have been agreed to by the committee." Or the scope of the project.
If it's written writing, that's fine.
So does everybody kind of understand? Do you want to write back?
"This analysis should consider a reasonable rate structure that is consistent with similar facilities in the region and confirmed in consultation with subject matter experts' experience with the services and amenities agreed to by the committee."
So my only question is, does that mean somebody other than Sedco? Because the description of the experts could be Sedco. As I, as I hear you read that. And that's kind of the issue I have, should not, we don't want to rely on just our own, you know, staff or organization or, you know, hybrid organizations to be.
If I could simply respond, I think it would be foolhardy for the committee, and I expect staff will be working closely with them, to try to somehow short-circuit the process because they're going to get what they deserve. So if there's a fear that there's, we have to lean on this committee, I think my expectation is that they're going to take their work seriously and they're going to do it as thoroughly as they possibly can. I'm not sure if I understand the.
I don't understand your response, so I guess we're equally confused.
Well, there seemed to be a suggestion that Sedco wouldn't be appropriate, in your opinion.
No, no, I think the suggestion was that, like with the Downs project, that we would rely on some independent resource to have a look at things. And it was focused primarily on financials. This is in the section talking about revenue forecasting. So that's, it's not, this is not a knock on Sedco or the software program they buy or the consultants associated with software program, it's, it's an independent.
Maybe just substitute with independent subject matter experts.
Why would we want to do that? Wouldn't we want to be able to give the committee the discretion to use whatever professional consultants they deem necessary and appropriate?
Yeah, I, I wasn't thinking of Sedco when I came up with that. And I was okay with the original wording, just to be clear. And for me, because we're talking public, what's going to sell this or not is actually getting commitments from users to, you know, fill up some of the time slots that, that we have. And that, so if we have, if it's a pool, you know, somebody who wants to teach lessons or swim clubs or clubs that are willing to commit to using the facility, that's going to, I think, drive the answer that you're, I think, getting towards. Or that would be, to me, more valid than an outside expert coming in and saying that, yeah, you might be able to get with this size community, with this median income, this many people to sign up for swim class.
It strikes me, this language should give everyone comfort that we're going to be relying on experts' experience with the services and amenities agreed on. So it's not a off the street, it's someone that has particular expertise in these arenas.
So I guess the motion on the table, as Tom just read it, "in consultation with subject matter experts' experience with, with the services and amenities agreed to by the committee." So with that, are we ready to vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion number four, back to the main motion then, motion on the floor, motion four, approved to amend. The main motion is amended to three timeframe as follows. The committee shall advise the town council as soon as possible with their respect, with their recommendations, but no later. We originally had December 4th. Paul has suggested December 15th. So let's leave it at December.
Or 15th?
December 15th.
What are you doing?
Motion four.
Motion four, motion five.
So forget, forget motion four.
Not necessarily. No, we want to observe, that was your, I believe, your proposal.
No, I'm okay with.
Okay.
You want to skip four and go to five?
Yeah, skip four and go to five.
Okay.
So the motion is, is motion five, the report out is done by December 15th. Is what was reckoned, is the suggested language, and strike the first part.
So I have. It's going to be moved. I'll move it.
Okay, second. Yep. I just, I, I think I'm a little, I did say December 15th, so I just want to give some background. I think everybody at this table has heard it at one point or the other. I think Bill and I had discussed, I liked the idea of having, actually Bill, Tom and Peter and I, I think, have all discussed at different times, but there's a difference between these guys reporting out and us voting on it, right? So I was pretty concerned with the timeline and what I'm thinking. And I, I agree that the date that we vote on this should not be in the committee charge because this is a committee that has, so I, I understand. But in an effort to at least buy us a little bit more time, I think I had negotiated with Peter. And I don't, I don't, Bill, I'm not 100% sure if we did December 15th or not. But it does give us two more weeks, which if we do look at, we are dealing with Thanksgiving, so we are dealing with nine people. We are dealing with Thanksgiving. We are, we're already dealing with an incredibly accelerated timeline. I would go later than December 15th, but I feel like it's, this is more the spirit of the consensus at the workshop, so I didn't want to go too far off the rails on what the consensus was on the workshop. So that's where the December 15th number came in.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yeah, I mean, I see your point.
Yep.
And it's one, it's one more meeting because add 14 days to December 4th.
Yeah.
And they would be reporting out to us on December 18th.
Yeah.
I guess in the spirit of compromise and interest to give them more time, I would support this.
Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, I'm fine with extra time, but what does the report constitute? I know we've struck the language that says that there would be a specific recommendation. I'm assuming that would be, and I remember the dialogue was pretty, pretty active on this, that we thought if possible, they could make a recommendation on the, on the proposal that was in front of them. And I thought, there was other discussion to the effect that they could make a recommendation on needing more time in order to make a, a quote unquote, recommendation.
And that's still in here.
But it's.
So you're.
Just soften it from.
Right. It's a report as opposed to a final recommendation on proposal.
You know, if Paul's, you know, I mean, it'll either be one of two things. It'll either be the final recommendation or it'll be the report that they need more time.
So the report gives them flexibility that it would just be an update and we need more time. It wouldn't be just that we got to give a yes, no on the, right? That's how I understand it. And maybe that's not going to be reflected in the legislative record, but that was my question.
So any further discussion? I think all those in favor? And I will withdraw the last motion six, so it's back to the main motion as all the amendments. And then I think that turns us to Don, whoever, Don, you may have in the queue?
Yeah, I, I wanted to run through this and a part of it may have, I may strike some of these. And sorry to be the, you know, the caboose on the train here, but, you know, I came out early and I felt that a lot of stuff that I had proposed was, was pretty much tossed out. So I came back around again here in the 11th hour. So thanks, Tony, for adding this. And apologies to the committee for, you know, to the council for, you know, distracting on. The first one I'll talk to is the blue wording at the schematic design and layout. This may be more appropriate for when the committee is in actual operation, past the, you know, past the recommendation phase. So if that's the case, I'd strike this. But if this is a committee that we expect could be commissioned then to carry on with the work, like the Public Safety Building Committee, then I, I think we need to be clear about making sure they, they have project management expertise that will help bird dog our, our costs and keeping things on, on schedule in terms of timeframe and that sort of thing. So that was the intent of the wording.
Just want to ask a question on that. When we did that with the Public Safety Committee, did we then edit or advance a different charge when they, when we ended up continuing their work? Is that how it worked? So to Don's point, this would be if, if this committee were to be charged with moving forward, this would be a few, part of a future charge perhaps? Because I can see that playing into it in that regard. I don't know that it's necessary now. Does that make sense to you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And to answer your question, Counselor Foley, I think, wasn't it a different team that actually, it was a subset of the main team?
Right.
There was components of both.
Yeah, it was ad hoc. They completed their initial task that went away and then you reconstituted them. It had a handful of, two thirds of the original members, but a different charge.
So there would be a process of reconditioning and then the ad hoc committee would be concluded? Okay, fine. Then I'll withdraw this motion.
Right. And the, just so you know, the ad hoc, what that, what that means is it's not standing. Once it, once its charge is met, it's self-destruct.
I, I have a little more to say on the ad hoc committee, the meaning of ad hoc, but I'll save that for some other time. Maybe a little bit later this evening. But, and the next one, we are focused on lease-build and we think primarily a lease arrangement. Are we quite certain that there will be no chance we would capitalize this, you know, a community center? Because if we are, then I will withdraw this. If not, I think it needs to be included. And even if we are talking about, you know, lease, lease-build structure, we still need to talk about trade-offs. So that was the intent of my, of that wording.
Counselor Duncan?
The baseline analysis, I think, assumes a capitalized venture. So I think it's in there.
Might suggest, we need a second just to get this matter up for discussion?
Second.
Oh, sorry, second.
So. Counselor Johnson?
I guess the way I'm looking at this is it's, and I could be wrong here, but if we don't, if we don't enter into this agreement with the Edge, this is going to go away for a significant amount of time. So there won't be any debt burden that we're, I, I'm, I'm, this is an up or down vote on if we're going, essentially, the most, the task at hand or the most, the current task at hand is like yes or no to the Edge. And in my view, if the answer is no, the, the community center is probably getting shuffled behind the school and all that, all, all in the library. So to me, the, the debt analysis is more of a decision-making mechanism on the partnership with the Edge. So I think it's important, but I don't think there's a chance that our reaction to the Edge isn't going to be no to the lease, but let's go try, let's go ask for $20 million. It's going to be no to the lease and see a community center in five or six years or seven years. So I, I guess that's where I am with this analysis. I think the analysis is more of a decision-making mechanism. And, and don't get me wrong, I mean, it can be picked up later. I just, that's where, that's where I am for the committee right now as it's being formed.
So the wording, you know, the wording as is, I think is, it doesn't really fit with the title. So I think this is probably not, not precisely worded. The issue I have is, are we certain that we're not going to have any discussion of a capital deal? A deal involving capital and all these other things? This is kind of like, you know, this is a speech, the narrative here. But if, if there's a chance we're going to talk about capitalizing it during the, the term of the ad hoc committee, then I think that needs to be referenced here someplace. The word capital's got to be in here someplace.
How about if in item two, which in the original document is item one, we have lease slash build, if you made it lease slash build slash capital cost?
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, I'd withdraw the motion with that proposed provision.
I could go with it.
Yeah. Got to have that word capital in there.
So that motion is withdrawn and there's a replacement motion to add the word capital to?
Lease slash build slash capital cost.
Wherever you see lease, build, add capital.
Yeah, do we want to do that globally on the document or?
Just, that's what I was going to ask. Do you want it just in this one section or all?
We could do it global, I mean, it, it makes the most sense under item two.
He did.
Yep, you didn't hear that, Tony. You missed that part.
So moved.
Second.
So I guess we're, any further discussion on that particular one? So I think we're at, we, the motion is to just amend item two to announce that I've expected lease, build slash capital trust. There's four places.
Yeah, there's four places that are chosen throughout the document.
Yeah, they're identified in motion one.
Yes.
So that's what we're amending, is the motion one that was passed. Motion to amend number one to add the word capital.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
That was easy.
That was easy. So the next one, it's along the same lines. It's this item, it's under other, other analyses. And this was struck completely last time, and so I put it back in as it was the first time. So, sorry, yeah, I didn't, it's this one, it's the blue one called Establish a Budget. So the concept of an ad hoc committee without having a budget, discussion or deliberation of any kind and not referenced at all in other analyses just seems a little bit scary to me. Now, here again, I, the narrative is pedantic, you know, and it is, you know, it's a little bit over the top, so I can whittle that down significantly. But I, like capital, I think that a budget's got to be in here someplace. Other committees have done that. We did it, you know, we did it before, and I think that will be a key element.
So before we start, a second to?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
And I also have one more.
Yeah?
When I read this originally, it's the council's job to determine what can be afforded with, with things. I, again, it goes back to, I see this ad hoc community center advisory committee is.
I, again, it goes back to, I see this ad hoc community center advisory committee is telling us straight up, yea or nay, without getting into, you know, we make that determination, we get the report, and then we decide from there, you know, whether we can afford this or not, is it budget or not? But that's my opinion.
Counselor.
That was my note. It's a town council's job.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I think it's our job to determine affordability. They're gonna come to us with a proposal that'll have some numbers, and then we have to decide if, if it's something we'd be willing to move forward with.
So I, I think I get the drift here, and can I offer some alternative wording in the, in the spirits of the feedback that was given? Thank you. I recommend that we leave Establish a Budget, and then we would strike this entire thing except for the second sentence that would read Develop a Budget with Various Levels of Amenities, Equipment and Services, striking good, better, best. So that's period, and then maybe one more sentence, Discuss and Recommend a Process and Timing for Initial Review and Approval by the Town Council. The end. So I'm gonna read that again. Develop a Budget with Various Levels of Amenities, Equipment and Services, period. Discuss and Recommend a Process and Timing for Initial Review and Approval by the Town Council, period.
So is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Much love.
All those in favor?
Yeah, I'm ready.
He asked for discussion.
Could I have it read to me one more time?
Develop a Budget with Various Levels of Amenities, Equipment and Services, period. Discuss and recommend a process and timing for initial review and approval by the Town Council. I can, and I can strike initial, just for review and approval by the Town Council. Discuss and recommend a process and timing for review and approval by the Town Council. It's two sentences.
I have a question.
Yeah, no, sorry.
I have a question on that through the chair.
Counselor.
What do you, when you mean develop a budget, are you saying that when they are looking at whether we're gonna yea or nay, you want them to go further and say, well, the pool will be this much, but something else will be that much? Is that what you're saying? I, I'm confused, I guess.
Well, we're talking about having this group spec and validate a proposal, so I'm assuming that would include detail on what would be included in the costs for that. So does that then become a budget, or is that a starting point, the budget gets developed later? I, I just, you know, do we, you know, my, my request is to try to develop enough of a budget, so at least there's something to go forward for the next phase of the committee. That was a thinking.
Counselor Donovan?
I understood the financial analysis sections, subparagras 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 are essentially a financial analysis that goes through all the steps. I wouldn't call it a budget, but I think it goes through all the financial steps that we all have been talking about as being essential to allowing for a judgment on the affordability of this proposal. So I think it, this proposal that's being made now is redundant of the financial provisions that we already have in the agreement.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I think the word budget is difficult because that's, that's, we're deciding if it's, if, if we have the budget for it or not. A cost-revenue analysis or something would, would make more sense in my mind. I, I actually like the good, better, best. So if you look at financial analysis, subparagraph two, a complete evaluation of expected operational cost is essential for analysis.
That should be good.
We could add to that, that we could break that into the three-tiered system of good, better, best. I think in a, I mean, I guess, I, my question to Counselor Hamel is, what's there to do with what you wrote, and a complete evaluation of expected operation cost is essential for the, this analysis?
So I will answer your question with a question. When would budgeting occur? And the reason I ask that is because when the Public Safety Building was underway, my, my wife was a member of that until, you know, they reached the 18 million mark, and then it went into the 20 million mark. But they started with a budget, and the budget evolved over time, but that committee started with a budget. What we're talking about here is having a committee, starting with analyses, and then how do you make a decision without them recommending a budget for the town to approve and fund and appropriate? So that's, I, I don't know the answer to the question, but that was the, the reason for my adding it.
Can I, can I respond to his question with a question, then? I guess I'm understand, I mean, to, to simplify this, to me, to boil this down as simple as possible, in my mind, I'm thinking, we're gonna be looking at a net operating budget, bottom line, and we're saying yes or no to it. So where are they, so I think the way you're doing that is we should set that now, like, let's say we will accept no more than a net operating loss than $100,000. Then they have a budget, and they can work within that to see if that's possible. But the way this is structured, I think they're saying, hey, this is how much it's going to be, if we're gonna do it right, and you tell us yes or no, if you're willing to absorb this net, I mean, it's gonna lose money, so the, so our question is, how much money are we willing to have the town lose every, every year? And then we vote on that number. That's my understanding of it, so I think that's why budget is confusing in the, in the language. That's all, so.
Mr. Chair?
Counselor.
I, I think we're getting too into the weeds with establishing a budget. Again, this is an ad hoc advisory committee advising us on whether or not we're going to follow through with some type of a partnership with this particular entity. I think that budgets come later, but I think, you know, I think we've addressed financial analysis and what numbers look like, and again, you know, ultimately, it's gonna be the Town Council who's gonna make the decision.
Counselor Donovan?
I agree with the comments made by Counselor Johnson. The net operating loss is going to show a certain amount of money that has to be made up with the general fund. And that number, the Town Council will look at that number versus the baseline analysis, and neither one may be acceptable. And at that point, that's from which negotiations I could envision taking place with Edge, that we can't afford what's here, so let's negotiate something we can afford, if we think that whatever that negotiation is would result in a good deal for the town. But that's how I would see that in the end working out.
It's a chicken or an egg, okay? It's an egg as an analysis, it's a chicken when it breaks out of the egg. It's a budget, okay? So tell me when that happens. So I'm happy to, and this idea's fluffiness, so when did the budget happen under the downs? When did that happen? What was this, an analysis and then, oh, it actually was negotiated and we voted on it at the end? You know, the, the budgeting and negotiating was done before the council saw it. So this is my reason for dancing on the head of this pin. It's a key question, and I have a similar revulsion to the idea of talking about numbers on this scale, and a commitment like this, with all kinds of analysis and independent experts and so forth, and nowhere in the ad hoc committee charge is the word budget.
Maybe to bring us together here, I, I, I don't have a problem with saying budget somewheres in the document. Where I think it might fit is in the motion one amended financial analysis, item two, currently, I believe, reads a complete evaluation of expected operational cost is essential for this analysis. We could add there, and a determination of the budget impact. And I, I think there's gonna be two, two impacts. One's gonna be the capital lease, and the other's gonna be the operational, you know, surplus or deficit. And, and they should be able to give us some, some rough numbers for what that impact's gonna be before we've done any negotiations, of course.
Counselor Donovan?
So under financial analysis, subparagraph four, which says combined analysis, the lease and operational expenses should be considered against the expected revenue so as to identify any gap that may, that may need to be covered by other sources of revenue. Insert the word budget in there, that's, that's the point at which it's the, it's the shortfall.
We're falling short of calling it what we want it to be. If we're comfortable with this, then I kinda get the idea, okay? If we're not comfortable talking about a budget, then I, I have real issues with that, because that's our, it's in our domain as its council to appropriate and to, now whether we get recommendations and develop a budget as a council, or whether they recommend a budget, it's gotta be there someplace, and it's not there now with this wording.
But what, Counselor Donovan just suggested, does that do it for you?
Pardon? And he was gonna add budget here, or just say sources of revenue, including a budget?
Counselor Donovan, you would suggest.
Yeah, I'm trying to see where in, subparagraph four, identified as combined analysis.
Well, you have general tax support there, so to me, that gets to it. I, I'm not opposed to throwing the word budget in there, I just haven't quite figured out exactly how to work it out.
Yeah, my problem is, I don't think we've figured out where a budget is gonna fit in this process, and I feel really uncomfortable commissioning a committee to make a decision or recommendation on this without pinning down. If they don't give us a budget, then when, you know, recommend a budget for our approval, when does it happen? How does it happen? It's not an analysis. It is a financial analysis, but not the same as a budget.
So is there, is there a suggested amendment to this from anybody? Counselor Johnson?
So through the chair, you're talking about the operational budget of the facility, is that correct? But isn't that gonna be determined on a million factors that they're trying to sort out right now? It could be a million dollars a year, and it could be $500,000 a year, depending on the scope of the project, right? But you're talking about the operational budget of the facility.
I'm, I'm sorry, but it could include its capital, it could include funding.
Yeah.
You know, in the current budget through expenditures or other sources. But if we talk about doing the analysis without pulling together in a budget and a specific proposal supporting the recommendation, or telling us how and when it's gonna be resolved, I gotta, I have a real problem with that.
I guess at this point, without, it's any.
Up or down?
Up or down, move the question.
All those in favor of, as amended, you'd recalled it and amended it to the two sentences, right? Is where we were, is what we're.
Yeah, I had to develop under Establish a Budget, was a bullet item, Develop a Budget with Various Levels of Amenities, Equipment and Services, good, better, best, we'll add that back in. Discuss and recommend a process and timing for review and approval by the Town Council.
So all those in favor?
Not clear on it.
All those opposed?
Okay.
I didn't vote.
You didn't vote?
No, I didn't vote.
You abstained.
Well, I, I heard comment over here that people weren't clear.
I'm not clear what you meant by budget, I said that, sorry. I wasn't clear by reading this, so I wasn't sure if the committee was gonna be clear by reading this. I, because, and then I kinda viewed it as two things. There's our town budget, right? And there's an impact to this project on that, and I think they should touch on that with their combined analysis. But then there's also the budget for the facility, and I'm not, I'm not clear on what you mean by budget, I guess.
Well, I think.
We've already voted.
Yeah.
It's not.
It's, it's clear, we, we're fine with no reference to budget, so that's, that speaks for itself. Thank you.
Energy efficiency, your next item?
Uh, let's see. No, I'll strike that one, energy efficiency, strike that one. And the last one on timeframe, I, I think we've covered that sufficiently under Counselor Johnson's provisions. And that is all.
Okay, so now we're back at the main motion.
As amended.
As amended, which I haven't got, had a rephrase at this point. I don't either, to do it succinctly.
Does anyone feel it, I think we understood each amendment that was approved. Does anyone feel the necessity of having a, I'm ready to vote on the main motion as amended these several times.
Counselor Hamel?
I would like to have some discussion, and I know the hour's late, but we talked about, and I, you know, I love people who quote that, you know? So it's an ad hoc committee.
Uh-huh.
And we said in the workshop, we wanted it to be, even though it was ad hoc for a specific purpose, we said that purpose, as I understood it, included two things. And I know Counselor Johnson spent a good deal of time talking about this, and I may have forgotten it, or who knows what.
No, you're right.
Okay? But we talked about, we're okay with doing this, we're okay with vetting this thing that's right in front of us, and tell, you know, tell the community we gotta do that, and oh, forget about the why or anything else, but we're gonna do that, okay? Ad hoc. But wait a minute, we said we were also gonna entertain other ideas. Should they develop, or should this lead horse drop dead? And that is a, you know, a by-ad hoc committee. That, that's for the purpose of vetting a proposal, but also considering other options. And I do not think that even with this motion, as energetically revised, accommodates that. I still think the way this is framed is very narrow, and it will, in effect, preclude the opportunity of considering other options.
Counselor Kettering?
Through the chair to the manager, ad hoc committees can be amended, if you want to change the scope of them, through, through action of the council.
Regardless of the, the Latin meaning of the word, I think what is, I don't mean to dismiss that, but what's relevant here is your own, you define what an ad hoc committee is, and it is essentially a committee with a specific charge and a defined duration, as opposed to a standing committee that continues to exist. So I'm, I'm just.
I'm listening.
Counselor Donovan?
Paragraph five, four, expanded charge. If the opinion of the committee, the public-private partners is not worthy of consideration by the town, Town Council will consider expanding the charge to the committee to consider other alternatives for a community center. So we've provided for the right, and I think Counselor Johnson and I have talked about this, and I thought this was good language that was added to address the fact that we are keeping all options on the table.
That is a very narrow door, a very small opening and a window. And you've talked about refining the charge, you're basically resetting this committee for another ad hoc purpose. So I do not think that in any way gives equal footing to consideration of other options. I do not believe that that captures the spirit of what I thought Counselor Johnson was talking about.
Well, can we, so I think where we are, we've gone through, unless you have another motion you wanna introduce at this point, I think we've kinda circled back to many amendments to the first motion. And as Counsel Donovan asks, is people fairly clear what all those changes are?
Yeah.
And it sounds like we're ready to vote, is no other questions? And Don, I think your question, do you have a specific amendment you're putting back on the table?
Yeah, I don't, unfortunately, I do not at this time have alternative wording, and, you know, my apologies for that, so, but I, I really believe this is, I mean, you're having people dropping off the committee because of how this is being worded, okay? We're gonna see and hear more of that.
So if I understand J. Murray correctly, if Don came up with language by next Wednesday and wanted to add to this, we could do, we could make an amendment as early as our next meeting. Is that correct?
I'm looking.
Through the chair, through the, whoever can answer that question.
It's not.
The matter would be scheduled on your agenda to be right before amendment.
This is the time to put a forward, not next Wednesday, it's now.
No, I'm saying we would go ahead and go, we would put this forward, but then if we wanted to add to the charge, we could, is what you were, you were getting at, right?
It would have to be.
Not next week, I mean.
But down the line.
At some point, at any point.
Yeah, the matter would have to be added to your agenda, and then it's certainly.
Discuss about a specific change, so, so if that's a possibility, Don, that, there's a window to do something with that.
Yeah, I understand how it's written, how it's drafted, and I don't like it, I don't think it fits with the spirit of. I don't think it fits with the spirit of where we started on this. But I think it is entirely consistent with how we've approached this thing and running down the road on this since March. So, I'm, you know, I'm accepting it for what it is.
Okay, so vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor?
We're just voting on all the amendments, correct?
Yeah. Everything all wrapped up?
Yeah.
Yep. So, I think it's six and all those opposed? All right.
Thank you. Next item is non-action item. Item number 10 is standing and special committee reports. Maybe start... Counselor Cleary, I don't know. Probably isn't a lot of reports since last week, but...
No, nothing.
Okay. Counselor Johnson?
Uh, no, nothing.
Counsel Catarina?
I'm sorry. I have to report historic preservation mat last night. And they are moving ahead. The foundation's been poured. They're looking at Sills and whatever on the schoolhouse that we said that we would provide some money for. So, I just wanted to let you know that. That's it.
Counsel Donovan?
Nothing further.
Counsel Hamel?
Uh, yeah. There was one change. We had an appointments and negotiations committee meeting that was scheduled for yesterday, and we canceled that primarily because we were going to spend some time talking about assisting the staffing of this committee. The council decided to have the town manager recommend that and utilizing town staff. So, that is the reason for why we canceled that meeting.
And with that, I don't have any either. So, with that, town managers...
Yes, two quick things. I beg your indulgence. Public safety building, just to tell the public, we do expect the tower erection of the tower to begin shortly. So, you'll see activity on the upper part of this new parking lot. That will take three to four weeks, perhaps five, depending on progress. As part of that and really as a function of expanding and connecting the parking lots, we will be losing our row of parking, that row closest to the new building. And I mentioned that as we move into the absentee voting period, we'll be having town staff park behind and make the front lot available. So, we'll do our best to accommodate during the election period in particular. Two last things. We are scheduled to go back before the law court. This is on the tax appeal matters that are going back for a second time to law court. Oral arguments are scheduled for September 25th at 10:20 a.m. They are very regimented, the 10:20 a.m. here at the courthouse in Portland. I can give you more details. And lastly, Carbon de Court, this is the project for Habitat in partnership with town. Off Rutter Turn Road has a dedication ceremony on October 17th at 5:00 p.m. And I'm pleased to send that around if anyone's interested. Thank you.
With that... Petron case was when?
October 25th at 10:20 a.m. at the federal courthouse.
Federal?
Superior Court.
Counsel member comments? I'll start out the other end. Counsel Hamel?
Yeah, I'm not sure this is the time to make a motion or a formal request, but considering how the evening has unfolded in the late hour. But I feel that we are at a deficit in terms of the measures that we have that we as a council can recommend to help us bolster our remaining work on the revaluation and assessment process. Everyone acknowledges that's going to continue for not a period of days or weeks, but for months. And I think that's going to require more work, more attention and potentially more resources. So, you know, I'd like to propose that we consider having a workshop. I'm not going to make a formal motion for that this evening. However, I'd like to appeal to my fellow counselors based upon the feedback we're getting and the fact that we just have a lot of analysis and a lot of information that we're due to look at that I think would be best done with us taking the initiative rather than relying on the public to bear the burden of that. I think we owe them that.
Counsel Donovan?
Thank you. I agree that I think a workshop would be a good idea to see what we've learned and what kind of guidance we might want to give council committees on the reval process. I think keeping it in front of the community in terms of a discussion helps people to understand that they do have time to take advantage of the opportunity on any questions they might have. So, I would endorse that idea. Today, the town manager, David Befard, the assessor, Counselor Hamel and I attended the mediation on the Piper Shores litigation. There's, for the public's benefit, there's pending a exemption appeal as well as a soon-to-be abatement appeal on the assessed value of the property. I think it became clear to all of us attending on behalf of the town as we sat and talked about it for hours, and we were there for about four hours, that there will be a lot for all the seven of us and the town manager to learn in the months ahead. We have motions for summary judgment filed by both sides. And for the public's benefit, summary judgment motions being judge, just decide the case. The facts are really not in dispute. Each side presents the law. Those motions have now been filed in the last two weeks. Responsive pleadings, memos of law and opposition will be filed in the coming weeks. The oral argument will be held in a month or two. The abatement appeal will be filed, we're told by the Piper Shores people, will be filed in the next several days. And we indicated to Piper Shores that Counselor Hamel and I did not feel comfortable making a proposal and settlement in light of all that we're going to learn about the nature of these appeals in the next two months. But we did say that we would conduct an executive session with council so that all seven of us are fully educated on where things stand. These are fairly significant appeals, involve millions of dollars of assessed value. And that's where we left it. No further offer and settlement was made by us, but merely a commitment that we would be looking carefully at it as a group in the coming months. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, as I was sitting here tonight and we were discussing various things, I just thought it was, I thought it was a good meeting. I thought there was a lot of good discussion among everyone, a lot of respectful disagreement and agreement. And I think getting through that document was a bear. Trying to keep track of motions is like, okay. So, you know, I congratulate my fellow counselors on getting it done. And I feel like we were kind of humming along tonight. So, that's my opinion on how things went. As far as the assessments, I get frustrated when I hear these conspiracy theories. There's some conspiracy theory out there that, I don't know, that KRT wasn't doing their job or whatever, whatever. I mean, it's a stratified process. It's not in the hands of any one person other than eventually it's the assessor who makes the determinations. So, you've got KRT goes out there. They do a massive assessment of properties. And I do think it's important, you know, to think about how many properties were they even allowed to get into or able to get into or not. And it's not like me doing Orkady Foley, who's another Realtor, going into an individual property and we can pull specific properties and, you know, adjust specifically. It's not as easy as that when you're talking about, what, 9,000 properties or however many properties there are. And so, I fully appreciate the fact that the assessing office... You heard Mr. Befard. He's willing to talk to people. He'll sit down with them. And as I mentioned in my comments prior to now, people who've talked to him individually or talked to members of his staff have been pretty satisfied when they've left, the ones that I've talked to. Yeah, they're frustrated. Yeah, it's more money. I mean, I personally, I've taken a huge hit. But I was also undervalued for a long time. So, I get it. It's my turn to pay what I should be paying. So, you know, I just wish people would turn down the rhetoric a little bit and, I don't know, stop talking about conspiracies and move on. Talk to the assessor. All right, thanks.
Counsel Foley?
Yeah, I agree a lot with what Jean Marie just said. I know there are a lot, were a lot of mistakes. I know there's a lot of concerns. But if people can't get themselves in here to have those conversations, I'd be really curious to know what they expect us to do differently or what the other options are because we don't really have a whole lot of other options. We can't stop the process. We can't stop the town. We can't, you know, stop providing the services that people need. And to do so would be majorly disruptive to everyone's lives and detrimental to anything moving forward. So, get yourself, if you have concerns, get in here and have those conversations. It's accessible. It's there for you and you need to take advantage of it. I, you know, I do think there are, have been a lot of inconsistencies and I totally understand. I mean, I have a house that said that it's all wood floors and there's not a wood floor in the house. It's carpet and vinyl. But, you know, that's neither here nor there. That's not changing the value by 20 or $30,000. So, use the resources that we've made available. Other than that, I don't... Happy back to school, everybody.
Boo.
Says the teacher. Boo, says the teacher.
So, I have four things. Number one, just to... I'm not opening up business here, but to go back, I was a little confused at the end. I thought we were voting just to solidify all those amendments. Counselor Hamel, I do want to agree with you. We did talk specifically about bringing the committee charge back to the CEA. And I do think that was a consensus. So, I do think you have valid points on that. You know, I know this isn't the appropriate time, but there's a side of me that, you know, I think the school should be priority anyway. So, there's a side of me that I don't know if I care anymore, so to speak, for that, which sounds bad, but that's where I am. Secondly, as far as the committee selection, I think it's important that we're having an executive session to actually pick people. So, I believe we're going to see every single applicant that comes to the door and we as a council are going to get behind closed doors and pick the appropriate people on the committee, which I can't wait to do. That's going to be super fun. Hey, if we got through this document tonight the way we did, we can do anything. Tody, thank you very much for helping tonight because I think without whatever you put in front of us tonight, none of that would have been possible.
Yes, very great.
And lastly, to not, I'm not trying to appease Mr. Hamel too much here, but I actually, I would love at the finance committee to see the last five years of bonds that we have approved that are up to amounts and how much we actually bonded out of that. I think that would be a really cool exercise to see, you know, if we say it's 1.6, has it been 1.6 or has it been 1.4? I think, I understand the context in which you guys are talking about it, but separate of the land trust and separate of, Jean Marie, I forgot what example you brought up.
The sewer.
Yeah. Separate of that, it'd be really nice to see the last few elections, the last, the bonds that we voted on. How much of that are we bonding? I think that's, are we at 100% of what we are proving or are we at 82%? I think that's a great fruitful conversation to have. So, I, Dawn is the chair of the time next committee. I think that'd be a great thing to discuss when the times are appropriate. Plus, it creates more work for Tom and that's... We're all winners.
Yeah, well, to Paul's point, actually, that's what I spent the past couple of days trying to chase down is what are authorized but unissued bonds. And I did work with the town's finance director to find that information. So, it was helpful for me to see. And she actually did mention that periodically they do come back to council to rescind bond orders that are no longer needed. So, and that there might be a reason to do that sometime soon. So, it was extremely interesting. Me, I'm somewhat of a data junkie. So, the biggest thing with the reval for me is that there's a lot of really useful information there. I know that people speak to the, you know, the quality of it and it's subjective, you know, when you talk about data quality, right? You can't afford 100% quality, but this is pretty good data. And one question that is raised for me is, you know, we missed the impact on the tax rate estimate by a bit. And to me, when we did the budgeting process, right, we expected our values to go up 1%. The explanation for why we missed it, I think, has something more to do with our commercial values didn't go up as much as we expected. So, that's something that I'm going to try to dig into and see if maybe there's room to improve in the future. And certainly, to your point, I would support a workshop to look back at lessons learned and certainly if I see anything in the data, I would say so. I don't think there's any conspiracies out there. I think everybody's doing as good of a job as they can and in the end, the process is designed to be redundant and work. So, that's where I'm at with that. And then the other thing is, I was happy to see that we actually have some candidates running for the different offices in November. And if anybody wants to sit down and talk about what it's about, I've enjoyed my experience thus far. I'd be happy to meet with anybody.
He's still a rookie.
And pivoting to that, and seeing that it's late, I'll keep it short. But speaking of candidates, we do have a slate that has, it's all done, right, Tody? Closed out. So, for town council, there's two seats and we have four candidates. William Donovan, Betsy Gleason, Ken Johnson, Robert Rowan. School board, there's two seats for three-year term. It's Alicia Giftos, Anna Lee Rosenblatt, Brian Shumway, Kristen Turner. For the sanitary district, two seats for three-year terms, it's Joseph Carroll and Paul Rodriguez. And the sanitary district trustee, one seat for one year, is Ruth Summers. And we had talked about, and thank you Counselor Hamel, about the suggestion on the workshop. Tom and I did talk about that today and we'll see if we can get that next town council meeting, which is the 18th. And with that, thank you, everyone, for your patience tonight. And with that, as we approach tentacle one tonight, just before we close out.
Oh, I see. So, I think...
I think that if you're over an hour off, that you shouldn't, it shouldn't even count. The whole meeting is thrown out. So, nobody was within an hour. But if I have to give it to somebody, it's Paul.
So, amid that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Thank you, everyone.